Hi, welcome to the November 8th Planning Commission meeting. We have a couple of public hearings tonight and one sketch plan. Jackie, do you want to do roll call?
Here.
President.
Commissioner Kivamaki.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Nemroff.
Here.
Commissioner Hanlon.
Here.
Commissioner Perube.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here, thank you. Okay, so we also have the meeting agenda in front of us. Does anyone have any changes to it? Any additions, comments?
Move approval of the agenda as submitted?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. Alright. So, next thing we've got is the approval of the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of October 13th, 2016. Any comments on those? Nope?
Move approval of the minutes as submitted?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, so now we have the first public hearing, which is a two-foot fence height variance for 5113 George Avenue.
Okay, thank you Chair, members of the Commission. I'll be pinch hitting for Chris tonight. For a variance request, this property is located on Gorgas Avenue. It's located just south of the 50th and France area. This is a graphic of the property. It's located adjacent to an apartment building on 50th. We'll take a look at an aerial in a minute that shows the area a little better. There's a new house under construction on the site, and they would like to install a six-foot tall fence along the side lot lines and an eight-foot tall fence along the rear lot line. Our city code maximum height in an R1 district is six feet. But again, as I mentioned, there's an apartment building to the east, so they'd like to build a taller fence to provide a little extra screening. So here's the site. You can see Gorgas, it ends in a cul-de-sac, the 50th and France area to the north. And here's the apartment building. It's a three-story building located on France. So again, here's the new house that's under construction. I'll look at what the fence would look like. They want to match the existing fence that's out there. This is the house that's under construction. This is the fence, adjacent fence that they would be matching. So this is, I'll look at the fence that was constructed as part of the apartments back in, oh, the 60s when the apartment building was built. The height of that fence ranges anywhere from three feet to eight feet. On commercial properties, you can construct a fence up to eight feet tall to provide that extra screening. So here's a look of the rear yard. This is that existing fence. You can kind of see the various heights. You can see the apartment building in the back. So primary issue for consideration with all variances is the variance justified and is our variance criteria met. In this case, staff believes it is. The practical difficulty is the location of the site adjacent to that high-density residential area. To give you a little history of that six-foot requirement, back in, oh, around 2000, the city's height requirement for fencing was, we did allow up to eight feet tall. But as one of the, we were experiencing the tear-down rebuild phenomenon way back in the late 90s, and what we were starting to see was eight-foot tall fences constructed on 40- and 50-foot wide lots, and it just didn't seem right. So we amended the code to reduce that to six feet. Council recognized in the Planning Commission at that time that we do have a lot of existing eight-foot fences in town, and two, we do have properties that are but commercial and higher-density property. So we figured that we would be seeing a lot of variances. At least in my 10 years here, we haven't seen too many of them. There have been a couple. But that's just to provide the Commission for a little bit of the history on fencing in the residential area. So we also believe it's reasonable to provide that extra screening for the taller building there. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the variance, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Nemroff?
Thank you for the report, Commissioner, Planner Teague. I have two questions. First of all, how tall is the house going to be? I assume there'll be a second story on the house?
Correct, it is a two-story house. I don't know the exact height, but it, you know, it's a new height, a new home, so it conforms to our height requirements.
Yeah, so I'm guessing that the second story will have windows, that this fence won't help at all, it won't help the view at all.
Correct.
Wouldn't, wouldn't trees be a more effective screen? They go taller, and they're more pleasant to the owner, actually.
Yeah, they're intended to-
Because I've seen these fences, and you're left with this fence, and then you have a lot of sunblock, and then your yard starts dying, and it kind of, it's not that great, especially in the spring when snow melts, and it just kind of sits up against the fence. And, I mean, wouldn't trees be more effective?
It would, and they are intending to plant some trees back there, some arborvitae that would probably, that would grow taller than the eight feet. As you look at this aerial, it's, there are a lot of mature trees, there's a lot of shade back there. But they will be planting additional trees in the back. They're removing some trees in the backyard, so per our tree ordinance, they need to replace those.
Yeah, so, I mean, you just, three, four years down the road, depending on the kind of trees you get, it seems like the fence will almost be something that you wouldn't want. It might meet a need to screen yourself on the, for the, when you're standing in the backyard for a year or two, but after that, I think it's actually going to be, I could see some owner liking it even less than a shorter fence, especially as the trees make sure.
Any other comments?
I just, I mean, I had, as I noticed that, I mean, that the council did, and even the Planning Commission indicated that variances would probably request, and I would think if you were creating a situation where you're creating all this extra work. But you did mention that there haven't been that many, so it's really, this does appear to me to be the appropriate way to deal with these unique requests, I mean, since it's not that many.
Yeah.
And I certainly, looking at it, certainly just to have a uniform fence back there, and the idea about trees, it's a pretty crowded, the building really looms over the lot. I'm not sure there's going to be a lot of growth back there, but it's a pretty dark lot in back, but I think the eight-foot fence is appropriate.
I appreciate that in materials, there is documentation from neighbors on either side saying that they are fine with the fence, and in my mind, that's pretty significant because they're going to be the people most impacted. So, thanks for including that.
Commissioner Hanlon?
I didn't understand if the condominiums had spoken on that. Are one of those homeowners, one of the condominium owners? How close is that fence to the building? I didn't feel comfortable going back there to that depth of the lot to see how close it was on the condominium side.
Yeah, it's hard to get back there. I drove out there today, too, as I'm pitch-hitting for Chris. I wanted to see the site, but it's, you can't really see back there. But this, the fence that you're seeing here, that does belong to the condominium. Again, as I mentioned, as they've replaced it over time, it's, the height varies. So they'd like to put a fence on their property that, in a sense, screens that fence in addition to the, to the building.
And it seems that if they, if they put a fence at six feet, they're going to have a portion of that other fence showing two feet above.
Correct.
So aesthetically, that's going to be quite odd.
Correct.
Well, but the downside to that is, if you put it up eight feet on your side, it's still three feet on the other side. So what you've made attractive on your side, you've made unattractive on the other side. I'm sorry, I did not understand that the fence that is there was to remain.
It is, yep, that's, that's the condominium property.
Is the applicant here?
To address a couple of your questions.
First to your name.
My name is Emily Sefton. I'm at 5113 Gorgas Avenue in Edina. Well, we're moving in about four days, so yes. So to address a couple of your concerns, I actually spoke today, and I believe they emailed it to Chris with the condo owner right behind us, and he was fine. He sent an email today indicating that he was fine with it, and he supported the variance. In talking to the homeowners association with the condo building, they do have plans to take down that fence, because our first approach was to actually just remove the fence and build it at our cost, but since it's on their property line, they didn't want to deal with the liability issue of that. But they do have plans in the next couple of years to tear that fence down, so I don't think that there would be the double fence situation for very long. But in speaking with the homeowner at, or the condo owner right behind us, he said as long as the materials were wood, and it was at that cohesive eight-foot height, which would go with the slope of the landscaping, he was fine with it. So I didn't have, I wasn't able to add that to the packet, but he responded to the note.
Thank you. Is that, just for completeness, is that, we received a note this evening from John Malaria?
Yes.
Is that who you're speaking of? Okay, thank you.
Yep, so we talked about that. And then in regards to your tree question, we do, we did plant arborvitae across the back, and they are providing that extra protection, but as you mentioned, the aesthetic of the six-foot budding up to the eight-foot, we just wanted to try and get one cohesive height across, as I'm sure you could hear from our squawking children, we have small children, and we just wanted to get one cohesive height across the back without having to deal with the double fence.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? No, thanks.
Thank you for your time, thanks.
So, any comments? From the Planning Commission? Carrie, I just have one question, too. Sorry, I didn't ask it before, but so, does our fence ordinance require that the finished side of the fence face outside?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Any comments? Go ahead.
I quickly like to add, just for the, I guess, the setup of the site, I mean, this fence is running north-south, and if you look, you know, there's already established trees there, like really tall ones, so I think if they're putting arborvitae in, screening, it's going to get adequate sun for a, you know, shade-tolerant type of tree. And doing that against a cohesive fence just seems appropriate and much better than what's there, which looks just like a piecemeal type of fence that I don't think anyone could agree is attractive on both sides, so. I think making it uniform in what they're doing, they already have established trees, so, you know, the shade issue, you know, once those arborvitae grow up, makes total sense.
Anyone want to make a motion, or? Oh, sorry. Moving way too fast. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Patrick Botman, 5100 France, Apartment 205. Couple of points of clarification. At the recent board meeting that I attended, there are no plans to replace that fence, period. As far as the differentials in height, that was planned back in 1980 when the building was constructed. It's been like that, what, 40 years? It was purposely set up to look stepped down, and where the 51 Gorgas property line ends, it extends further for another 30 feet plus. So the, as far as the stepping, that was an architectural design. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak? Take a motion to close publicly?
Motion here. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for other comments. Any additional comments?
I may have move approval of variance, some to the issues and lines outlined in the staff level?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Are we ready? Okay, thank you Chair, members of the Commission. This next item before you is a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning request. Property is located at 6600 to 6800 France, project to be known as the Avenue on France. So it's located just west of Southdale. So this project before you this evening is probably the biggest project that the city has seen probably since the Centennial Lakes development in the late 80s. Pretty significant. This site is just under 22 acres in size. What exists out there today is the existing six- and seven-story office buildings. Those would remain with this project. There's a couple of connector buildings between those two that would be removed. The Tavern on France building, located out close to France Avenue, would remain. And Bank of America, which was recently approved, is currently under construction, is located down on the south side of the site. Property is zoned today, Planned Office District 2. It's adjacent to single-family homes to the west, and again, Southdale to the east. Site is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential use. So all the uses that are contemplated on the site today are consistent with the comprehensive plan. As you note here, this diagram indicates our height requirements. So there is a height requirement in the comprehensive plan for a maximum of four stories, even though the existing buildings out there are six and seven stories tall. The result of the comprehensive plan 10 years ago rendered the site non-conforming. So at, at full build-out, this is a multi-phase development, at full build-out, the applicant is proposing a new six-story medical building, it would be about 155,000 square feet, a new six-story office, that would be a little over 100,000 square feet, new four-story hotel, an eight-story, 70-unit residential condominium, three retail buildings along France, the Bank of America that's currently under construction, under construction today, and I mentioned the buildings that would remain. So here's a look at the proposed overall master development plan. So the new retail, here's the Bank of America, the new retail buildings, there's two of them, here, the new hotel along France, another retail building, this is that six-story medical office, the new office building that would connect the two existing towers, and then this is where the residential eight-story building would be located. This graphic indicates the phasing of the proposal. So again, Bank of America under construction now, the two larger retail buildings would be the next phase, or, so that's what's before the Planning Commission this evening for site plan review. The rest of it is the master development plan, the comprehensive plan amendment. So we have more detailed plans for those, that Phase 2A, 2B. The third phase would be the medical office building. Fourth phase would be the office and the hotel. And then the last phases would be the residential component and the additional retail building along France. So this request requires a comprehensive plan increase in that height maximum from four stories to eight stories. Again, the uses are all compliant. A rezoning from Planned Office, Planned Office District to a planned unit development. This would be our 11th PUD in the city. And preliminary development plan, or the site plan review for Phase 2A and 2B, those two retail buildings. As we talked about at our last work session, oh, about a month or so ago, you had mentioned or asked that we include the pyramid of discretion for just how much discretion that the Planning Commission has in, in making its recommendation to the City Council. So this is a project that is a zoning ordinance amendment and a comprehensive plan amendment. So you have complete discretion in your, in your review and recommendation on this. The Commission did go through a sketch plan review. This is a look at that sketch plan that we considered a couple of months ago. Some of the, they have made a number of significant changes, and I'll highlight a few of them. They've moved that hotel up to the street, that was a recommendation of the Planning Commission. They've eliminated a lot of the surface parking. There was about a little over 900 surface stalls, they've reduced that to just under 500. They've eliminated some of the parking around that savanna, that tree area, and they've added more green space, added more retail along France, varied the heights a little bit, added water feature. I've highlighted here on the corner of France and 66, but there's a couple of other locations where they're going to have water feature overall, we'll point those out in a minute. There was some concern over the name. They've changed that, too, now, the Avenue on France. That was more of a City Council issue. They've added a nature, nature trail through that tree area, and they've enhanced the pedestrian connections and experience. So again, here's a look at the site plan. You can see the, in review of the overall development plan, currently on the site today, you can't go from the north side of the site to the south side of the site without leaving the property. So now they've added this interior, which would be a kind of a Wu-Nur shared, shared road and pedestrian experience to connect all the uses together, both by the car and We did have a traffic and parking study was done by SPAC Consulting. Mike SPAC is with us this evening to answer any questions that, that may come up. Some of their conclusions, they're suggesting a left turn lane at this intersection here to make this turning movement into the site a little easier. They're suggesting signal timing, probably look at that every three to five years to make sure that the signals are synced up so the traffic can flow through there adequately. But in general, they, or they do find that the, the overall plan here, the existing roadway system, can support this project. And they also did a parking study and concluded that while this site is somewhat short-parked from our city code requirements, from a shared parking perspective, they are providing adequate So this diagram indicates the vehicle connections around and through the site, so you can see quite extensive and a vast improvement over existing conditions. The pedestrian connections, significant improvement, they're providing boulevard-style sidewalk around the perimeter of the entire site. Also, two connections through the site on both sides of that roadway, again, through the site, to provide access for residents that would live to the west to get to Southdale on foot through this site. In terms of the stormwater system, quite extensive here, looking at the overall plan. Just to highlight, I mentioned the above ground, so it's a combination of above ground and mostly below ground. But the above-ground water system features would be one on the corner here, and then two on either side of the proposed new office building, one here, one here. The underground system, there would be an underground vault in this location that would be associated with the housing project. Another underground system along Valley View right here, this will be in conjunction with this, the retail building that's going in here, so that would be in that, in that Phase 2A. Another underground system under this parking area, located here, and then a couple near this drive entrance, one in this driveway, and then another system located here. This system would go in with this retail building also. Also want to mention that, you'll note that the property line runs through this area here. The applicant is requesting a vacation of right-of-way in this area. That's an action by the City Council. They would consider that as, when this all moves to the City Council, they would consider that, that vacation at that time. In terms of building setbacks to R1 property, our current code requires any buildings that are taller than four-story that are located adjacent to single-family homes, the setback between those buildings and adjacent single-family property needs to be two times the building height. So in this case, the maximum height that's proposed is 85 feet. The existing buildings are a little taller than that, they're 90 feet. So we would require at least a minimum of 170 feet of separation between those uses. This graphic indicates some of those existing distance between the existing building, there's 330 feet here, and the residential property to the west, and 328 feet from the existing building to the residential property. This is where the residential housing would be located. There would be a 310-foot separation, so again, conforms to that requirement. And the medical office building that would be located here is 420 feet, so it meets those separation requirements. This graphic shows the dark buildings. These are the existing buildings on the site, the office to the south and to the north. This is the proposed residential structure, so again, just under what's existing, and then this is the taller, this is the medical building to the north. As most of you recall, we did set out some design guidelines within the greater Southdale area framework vision plan. So this is the suggestion within that study. You can see what this graphic indicates is this distance between, or basically the right-of-way on the street. If you have a 60-foot-wide right-of-way, buildings could be built 60 feet tall, so it's this 60 times 60 separation. On an 80-foot-wide right-of-way, the thinking was you could build to that 60 feet. If you then step back, you could increase to 80 feet, and so on. So with this, the right-of-way in Valley View is 110 feet. So the separation and the distances here are, again, they're consistent with the greater Southdale area, what we're anticipating for setbacks between buildings. So given all of that, those setback distances and the separation between the, the homes, staff is supportive of the comprehensive plan amendment. This would be what that looks like. It's simply changing that number to eight within the comprehensive plan. That would allow up to 96 feet, and the existing buildings would also be brought into conformance. In looking at the performance standards, the existing setbacks, et cetera, on the site, so note that the flexibility that they're requesting through the PUD would be in regard to height, that would allow that eight stories and 85 feet. Probably the biggest ask here is the increase in the floor area ratio. Currently, .5 is what's required on the site. They're asking for a doubling of the density to, up to a 1.0. And again, that's what's contemplated in the greater Southdale area, that vision framework. So that would be consistent, you know, it's assuming that we're meeting some of those principles and guidelines. And in terms of parking, they would need about 2,500 stalls, and they're proposing just under 1,900. But again, our, our parking consultant has concluded that that would be adequate to support the site. So in looking at the site plan, I apologize for the length here, this is a big project, so I'm kind of trying to take it slow and take you through it step by step, but, so the actual site plan that's before the Commission- So the actual site plan that's before the commission, so we're just looking at those two retail buildings now, that Phase 2A and 2B. So this is 2B, this is the retail building at 66th and France. So you can see they're proposing the boulevard-style sidewalk here. One of the suggestions of our consultant in the Greater Southdale Area study, Mick Johnson, who provided that memo that's included in the packet, he suggested a double row of trees here. The applicant's agreeable to that, and I believe they're going to have a slide this evening that's going to show that. So that would beef up that landscaping along here. They are proposing to do some of that underground parking that would be accessed right here, and it would be underneath the building. There'd be 47 stalls underneath the building. Moving to the, to the south, so this is the Bank of America that's under construction. So this retail building would be just to the north. There's also underground parking with that project would be accessed right here and would travel this way. 52 stalls underneath that building. And again, they'll be showing beefed-up landscaping all around the site. Staff looked at the landscaping in terms of the site as a whole, and they far exceed our landscape requirements in terms of the number of trees. Probably close to 200. Our code requires a little over 100 when looking at the site overall. So to show you some renderings of the building, so this is the Bank of America. This is France Avenue here. This would be that first entrance drive. So the building that you're seeing in the background, that would be the future residential building. But the building that we're focusing on is this retail space and the two-story element along the street here. So that boulevard sidewalk is back here behind the, behind the green space. So this is behind the building. Then moving to the north, this is, this is the existing building in the background. This is the entrance off France. Again, that two-story element that kind of matches the retail to the south. The applicant has a materials board that he'll go through and go through all of those materials. This is that underground parking as you would drive into the site. And this is a look from France Avenue. This is the Bank of America and the proposed new retail. So primary issue, is the proposed development reasonable to justify the PUD? This is again where we can use the Greater Southdale Area principles as part of that justification. And is the comprehensive plan amendment on height reasonable for the site? And I've touched on that in regards to the comprehensive plan amendment. Staff does support that. In regard to the PUD, we do believe that this plant, this project is in conformance with the Greater Southdale Area Framework Vision. We did have Mick Johnson review the plan, and he's provided his feedback. He believes that it aligns very well with our vision. It's that block strategy, dividing big sites up into blocks and providing pedestrian connections around and through the site. They provided underground parking. They've preserved a lot of the existing green space and expanded on that, and the architecture itself is very high quality. He did have some critiques, and the applicant has responded to those and will be adding those in their presentation as well. So with that, I will stop. Staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the PUD, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Okay, we'll open up for questions for Carrie. Okay, Commissioner Bennett.
Quick question. The 200 trees you mentioned, does that include the savanna trees?
It does.
Commissioner Nemirov.
For traffic going north on France Avenue, will there be any entrance to the site?
Might be helpful to have the traffic consultant answer all of, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more traffic questions, but just briefly, these intersections are full signalized intersections, so the left turn in, I believe, is available at both of those?
Those are existing intersections?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Does Hennepin County call all the shots on France Avenue as far as traffic issues?
Generally, yes. So we've, based on that, the vision plan of the Southdale Area and projects like this, staff has met with the county to introduce what we're trying to do here. In general, they're in agreement with it, and I think we still have some work to do in making some improvements in particular to the intersections. But those conversations have started, and I think we'll get there. But it is a county road, and they do sign off.
I mean, it does appear that the two entry points are existing, so we probably would be, I imagine they're going to enhance the movements in and out, but there's really no added entry points.
Correct. No, it's more of an elimination of entry points to focus on the two. One of the things you might have noted that Mick Johnson, our consultant, indicated was these right-turn movements out, narrowing those up a little bit to make the pedestrian experience better along here. That is something that maybe we can do. That was one of his suggestions, and the applicant is willing to work on that as well.
And also for the retail hotel restaurants on France Avenue, where will the pedestrian entrances, excuse me, where will the pedestrian entrances be?
There would be at the front of the building. Now, the hotel hasn't been designed yet, so that would be a site plan element that would come before the commission when they're ready to build that stage. Let's see, maybe we can go to our site plan.
I should, Mr. DeVolles could answer too.
Yeah, that might be a detail that he can explain how the onsite circulation is going to work.
Okay, Commissioner Verhoeve.
So it seems to me that one of the big questions on this whole site is height. And I wonder if you can give us just a minute or two on the history of how it was in the comprehensive plan that this area was four stories, and yet we have two buildings that are eight stories? And why was the plan created to not accommodate what's currently there? I mean, the idea wasn't that those buildings would be torn down or replaced by four stories. So why did we create a plan that wasn't consistent with what was currently there?
Excellent question. There's other buildings west of France that are over four stories as well that became non-conforming. Pointe de France to the north, as an example. The general, the city council directed the planning commission to address height as part of the comprehensive plan and asked them to put numbers specifically to it. And the planning commission made a recommendation, and the council reduced heights in general. This was one of those areas. The thinking was for both the west side of France and the east side of York, you note the four-story requirement east of York along here also. The feeling was that this is that a transition area from our, where we're going to allow taller buildings in the middle, in between York and France, and that four stories was the appropriate height as you transition into the neighborhoods. There's also some taller buildings to the south as well, 7,700 France where we looked at, up to 12 stories there. But so that was the general feeling, even though they did recognize there's buildings taller, they just, at that time, didn't want to see buildings taller than four stories.
So this would keep the eight, which I guess we had already always intended to keep, but then also add a few six?
Yes, so the comprehensive plan would be amended for eight maximum. The master development plan would show, you know, the six and eight.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a couple. Can you just, again, kind of go through what will be developed or improved as part of the site plan for the retail, if this is approved, for those two retail sites, such as like the whole pedestrian connection throughout the site, all the sidewalk system? I know you mentioned some of the underground systems were phased, but if you could just explain what we'll get right away?
Certainly. So maybe we should go to a... So unless conditioned otherwise, what the applicant is proposing is just to construct this retail and this plaza and the side, the boulevard sidewalk along here, and then this retail space here. So it would be providing a connection to that sidewalk that'll go in for Bank of America. So it would be all of this area and then all of this. Unless, we would like to, you know, some of the options that the planning commission might have would be to finish this area as well. But the thinking was the boulevard-style sidewalk along Valley View and along 66, those would occur as those other projects developed. So when the medical building came in, it would be an extension. And then when the middle site came in, that's probably when the majority of, that's when the interior roadway would be constructed, is when these middle pieces are developed.
Okay. So we do, as a condition of approval, we could increase some of the improvements as part of the Phase 2?
You could.
Okay. And just another question too, it's just with the comp plan amendment with going up to the eight stories. We still have the ability to say where that eight stories would occur on the site, correct?
That is correct. Yep, we still have the setback requirements to the R1 properties and through the PUD, you know, that could be, you know, if you were to approve this master plan, the assumption would be that the eight stories would be located here. If they wanted to relocate it somewhere else, they would have to amend this overall master plan and amend that PUD.
Right. But the planning commission, at this point, we would still have the ability to dictate where that would occur?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, all these future phases would come before the planning commission.
Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Nemirov?
Planner T. Reeve, you received feedback from residents near this property. Have we received any feedback from commercial entities near the property about the development?
We have not. We've met with Simon Properties, they're aware of the project. We were considering doing for, you know, if they had any plans to do a joint traffic study with them. They don't seem to have any immediate plans right now, but Simon is aware of what's happening. They didn't express any concern.
I mean, this might be a little bit of a field, but it seems like the development like this could be kind of a benefit and a burden to a shopping center like Southdale because if I'm putting my, you know, role-playing in my head, I'm thinking, well, gee, it's great to get all, have all these businesses and hotels right by me, but at the same time, I wonder whether my traditional customers will find getting to my location more difficult? Is that kind of the conversation that you've had with them, or has it gotten to that level at all?
It hasn't. They haven't mentioned anything in that regard. They did comment about liking these pedestrian connections to maybe get residents to the west to be able to feel more comfortable to walk to their site. That was some feedback that they provided.
Carrie, a couple of things. Just keeping in mind the Greater Southdale Plan and its vision, and looking at other projects nearby, how does staff feel this stacks up compared to other projects like 7,700 in France? And since you guys are recommending it, we assume you feel it's good, but where are areas that staff could see improvements in this plan, right? No?
Yeah, I've, in comparing, I would say there is no comparison to the 7,700 project. This far exceeds that project, just with the pedestrian connections, the plazas, the open space, the green space. This is, this is first-class.
So I guess to the second part of the question, where does staff feel there could still be improvements?
You know, with this...
You talked about certain areas that could be developed or that we could leverage. I just want to know if there's any sentiment that'd be worth noting.
Yeah, no, I think the applicant has done a fantastic job responding to the concerns of the planning commission, what staff has raised along the way. If there were things that we felt were short, if you compare 7,700 again, you know, we wanted to see that trail connection put in along that north lot line first phase. You notice we don't have any conditions like that. So you may have ideas and things that we may have missed and would be open to that, but staff doesn't see any suggestions that we would condition at this time. And again, as we move through and doing site plans for the each individual phase, you know, we'll have more opportunity as the site fully develops.
Thanks.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Bennett's conversation, the engineering department has a report, it's on page A109 of the packet you gave us. Are all those items being incorporated into the development?
They are. Yeah, that's one of the conditions, that all those conditions that are spelled out in the engineering study are required here as well.
Other questions? Great. Okay, so does the applicant want to present?
Good evening. Dean DeVolles, DJR Architecture, 5009 Ridge Road, Edina, Minnesota. Thank you so much for taking the time to walk us through the project. So what I like to do tonight is really do the presentation in two phases, give you a quick overview of the master plan. Carrie did an excellent job of explaining the project, so I'm not going to belabor it because he did an outstanding job of walking you through it, and then get specific to the two buildings that are going to be requested in Phase 1, which is, you know, called Phase 2A and 2B, and go through that in addition. And at the same time, I would have a presentation, I'll go through the Overville first, then Tom Wicklot will go through the landscape planning elements in there, and then Tom Caesar will go through the Civil. So they're all present, and if you guys want to just stand up, introduce yourself quickly, starting with you, Dennis, owner.
Son of owner.
Go ahead.
And so, and Aaron with DJR, who's actually, there's far more credit for this than myself. But I'm going to give you a quick walkthrough of the project. Have you, when I did the sketch plan review, was this same member present? Is there anyone new? Your new, okay, so I won't go over, you know, because I was going to zip through it, but I'll, you know, my apologies to the commission if I repeat stuff, but for your sake, I'll just sort of walk through it to let you catch up. So I'll see the, you know, this is the parcel we're talking about. These other two buildings are keeping. These two lower buildings are the ones that are going to be taken down. And as you can see, it's a very heavy parking lot domed area, because that's the area I grew up in with Southdale, when surface lots were primarily put the building in the middle and surrounded with parking. And this is what this grew out of. But part of the wisdom of this, which is fortunate, this old savanna was preserved from day one, and we plan to preserve and enhance it. So that's sort of a key piece of it. This just basically shows the context of where it sits and sort of the views of the site, just to give you a feel for what we're looking at. The zoning... The zoning, which Kerry mentions, I won't belabor that at all. The bus stop, so it is a site that does have transit possibilities, that's where I able to work in the pedestrian and sort of work down the parking, because there is a transit infrastructure exists here, it's been well-established with the bus system, existing survey, and this is probably a good graphic, because this gives you a feel of the large amount of parking which really dominates the site. And the question, here's the two existing intersections, but what I'd like to do, work the city and Hennepin County is really enhance the pedestrian connections across here and here to really build up on that connection. So we start scaling France Avenue. So, you know, the city put in a considerable amount of money to create pedestrian access here, ideas upgrade this, upgrade this, upgrade this, you start weaving east and west side of France Avenue together to create the connection. This, I just show us precedence, we worked on the Bank of America and really addressed a corner why I show this, is this element of getting the building a street and building the slow wall is the same idea, we can continue around the whole site to start scaling the pedestrian experience and screening the surface parking where we have it. This is the building we got built where the vitamin shop is, and this is the one that starts spring, which is another side of 70th. And again, this is, just shows the relating development in the area, you know, Southdale is rapidly evolving to a mixed-use community, and this just lists the various one in terms of residential being the primary, but also commercial. So there's a nice evolution, it's sort of becoming more of an urban center as opposed to just exclusive use like shopping and office. These have started become mixed and integrated. This just gives an idea of scale. This is Avenue on France, Excelsior and Grand, with everyone's familiar with, and St. Louis Park, and this on the edge of St. Louis Park, the West End shops, so you get an idea of the scale of the development, the scale of land we're working with. And now the proposed site plan. This is a view which Kerry showed, looking from the corner of France and 66 in the development, the idea of what the future streetscape will show. Now granted, we have double trees here that Mick mentioned, this was drawn before he got his recommendations, but they really anchoring the corner, emphasizing and starting to bring life from the inside block to outside to really start to define France Avenue, start building those connections between the medical district, the housing, this, and start weaving across the site and starting to pull these pieces together. And here's the site plan we mentioned, you know, we're going from .5 to .92 density. But what's key is this internal Vu Norf Street, and I'll answer the question, the retail's meant to be two-sided, not one-sided. So the thought is it'll have a France Avenue presence with access and a interior access on this interior street, which is a combination of pedestrian and auto street curbless design. So the idea that it really appears as a plaza and a connector, but also can handle cars that may enter the very center ground, garages and through this. So this whole zone is this shared parking pedestrian element with the water and landscaping elements mixed through here. So you start creating pedestrian experience here and additional pedestrian experience in series, to start scaling the blocks and building layering that starts to occur here, which starts to give more density, more opportunity for retail, more interaction, more plazas, more places for events occur as opposed to a site you drive through. And then obviously, the east-west connection and the north-south connection sets this up. The retail is two-story, and this part is two-story also, mezzanine design, so it has some bulk and scale to it, total street. Four-story element here, same thing here, and the idea is it gives some hind connection to achieve, it gets some variety to it. But the other reason we kept these buildings low in some cases, so we keep the views to the existing office buildings, because that's part of the deal, it's an existing development. These buildings have existing positions, so we create a variety of fights to give some interest along here, but also make sure that the views in these buildings also remain their connection, France Avenue also, because they're sort of a key part of it that occurs. We have the woodland trail that goes through here, the more pedestrian trails connect through here, the automobile also shares this, and then the textured pavement that you see in this area, it really sets it up. The change we did is we really opted to concentrate the density here on the east side of the site along France and make this rear side very green. We eliminated surface entrances here and here so that we can get this green color on the backside along with Valley View and the boulevard and the berm here to really allow for a green transition in neighborhood, and then made this front side have all the density and more of the hardscape urban plazas and so forth. So you have a very active front and a very pastoral back with connections through it which provide a good buffer and transition for the neighborhood, and that's, you know, for the purpose of noise, view, things like that. Where we want the action, we put along France, where we didn't want the action, really emphasize and strengthen the green by eliminating parking, you know, as Kerry mentioned, access points, but emphasize the pedestrian connections to keep the site tied together. This is a diagram that just starts showing sort of the hierarchy of pedestrian, the central spine, the plaza components, the green buffers, that just starts describing how the site is organized and how the components are getting put in place. Elements of the central landscaping, and Tom will go through this more in detail, so I'm going to sort of just go through this to sort of keep the presentation efficient. And again, we eliminated the service access drives here and brought them off our interior roads so we can really build this, but this again shows our vehicular network and how this connects, and there's full access off of here and here, so the idea is that we can distribute traffic through the site as opposed to have it all concentrate around the perimeter and put all the pressures, intersections. Now we have traffic that can get through in multiple locations and have more ease at the intersection. And then obviously, the pedestrian connections, which is sort of key, the ones that come from the neighborhood, go through the woodlands, the more formal ones that tie through the development to again start creating a grid of activity, more opportunities of corner, retail, and layering to create more interesting development. And again, Kerry mentioned this, but this just shows the various buildings phasing height, and you get an idea of the height, because there's question, we used the 60-800 building, sort of our guide saying, claiming, putting our, what I call our ceiling on height, and then worked everything else from that. Because the fact these are existing, the idea was they're already in the landscape, they're known, they're familiar with, and using those as our upper limit, have everything come off of that height component. And this just basically shows the uses of primary office, so these office buildings could have retail mixed with them also, primary retail, but these could have office on the second floor. In addition, hotel which could have retail on the main floor, the 16 Point of France, and the proposed residential building in this location. This is probably key, because the Southdale plan which is mentioned, this is from a page of the Southdale plan showing the block, the connections, the weaving of France, you know, this is a Mick Johnson product, how he's trying to tie this area into a active pedestrian scale district, and then this is how we're tying into it. So below here is Mick Johnson's proposal, the Southdale, how it could be future subdivided, and then how we're weaving into it, making those connections to start billing a plan. So this really being a very significant phase of the implementation of this plan, because it's 22 acres, it would be probably the largest site outside of the development, Southdale, and those components that really start setting up. And then the idea of, like you say, the green, and then the intensity of activity, which will, but Southdale, and in time as Southdale develops and you start developing their corners, hopefully it'll be a symmetry of the street with retail, office activities lining both sides of the street, so now you start training France Avenue has more of an interest and activity along it. The view you saw before the retail, but what's sort of important is the boulevard, the wall that, you know, that we're going to put around the site, and now that Trump's in, Mexico's going to pay for it, which is that low screen wall, and then the landscaping and the platform on top of it, and then these kiosks. So the idea is that we're bringing activity on France that are visible, so these would be glass boxes in which a retailer could sort of display their goods or activity, you think of the Shumpert's Leawood has that kind of setup to start giving that kind of focus, and it'd be lit at night, then the retail building itself. So he starts developing a layering hierarchy along France Avenue, as opposed to today where it's, you know, sidewalk, a little bit of landscaping and parking lot, and then the relation to the Bank of America, which we put together early, earlier. This is a view of the interior street of the Vu Norf, the idea curbless street, pedestrian-oriented, the infill office building, this is the existing 6600 building, this is a hotel, and the thought that you have connections through it on both sides, the water feature Kerry mentioned, and again, creating this interior street elements, you start to create different layers of activity, views, spaces, because then you get a greater density and a greater variety of retail, you've got more chances for it to occur within the development, same with the pedestrian component on it. So the landscape master plan, I'll go through this briefly, but Tom will go through in more detail in terms of its layering concept, tree preservation, so there, as much as there's a master plan on buildings, there's also a master plan on the landscape component, how that gets pulled together, and the various components and the type of landscaping used to create the different environments and different buffers and so forth, and the elements that be put in, these are examples of the scale and density landscape and the pedestrian placemaking that's going to occur within the project, as you can see here. These red lines represent sections through the site, and Damon Farber put this together to give you a feel for the street. So one is a section between the residential and the existing 6800 building, this one's between the new office, new hotel, and this one shows a relationship to France Avenue. So the idea, this is an example of the east-west street, look at this being the future housing, this being the existing 6600 building, of creating the drop-off pedestrian boulevard, the curbless simple street, that you start to create this, the idea is you have sidewalk on both sides, your street element, your landscaping, that starts to pull public connections through the site and starts to weave these buildings together, both on a pedestrian and vehicular basis. This is a section between the hotel on your left and the water feature you saw, again the Vu Norf portion of it, that the street will be defined by payment patterns and payment differences, but the idea that will read as a very broad connecting plaza that ties across, so it won't look like just an auto-dominated area, but really have the pedestrian feel and components to it and the lighting that scales with the area. And then the France Avenue connection, retail building, display, the terrace and landscape sidewalk, and the Doubletree Boulevard. So we start, you know, respect the Southdale plan which has a 40-50 foot setback, but start to put layering this at, this platform would allow for outdoor dining activities, this creates a green connection, circulation along here, then the green buffer, the double trees. So you start to step and scale the activity and scale the landscaping, so you just don't have this broad vast space, but you start to define activity through traffic versus dining related to the retail and the landscaping that comes forth, and the defining elements that give scale to the site. And then here's the landscape elements, and again, I'll let Tom do that. The civil master plan, I will just go through it quickly, because Tom Caesar will go far more detail in terms of our storage capacity, which is key to this, I'll just go summary. We are in Phase One, going to start handling our runoff water. Why that's significant, this came from neighborhood meetings, is we're going to be start treating the water from day one, which, and this flows in the Lake Cornelian, as you know, this summer we had issues with some toxic algae blooms. So at least this site will come offline in terms of surface water runoff, it will be filtered, stored, and then released, which will be a big deal in terms of improvement of Lake Cornelian. It doesn't solve all of Southdale, it doesn't solve that, but at least it's a big start to improving water quality in the area and starting to put that together in terms of that aspect. And then these areas show where the primary underground garages are, which is one level of garages that sit below. The site allows this to blend right in, because it has a natural dip to it. So these will be very invisible, because the topography of site allows us to weave them into the site so that they're not visible in terms of their aspect, and that's all the great details. Stormwater, which I'll let Tom do, so phasing plan, which Kerry went through, so I won't need to repeat that, but the idea of, we'll start with this and then work through the rest of the site. The site's designed so these pieces look good, while they're alone, while other phases come, so like there'll be raw edges or unfinished ideas, so each phase looks complete, but it weaves together like a puzzle. Why we're phasing the site is to preserve the parking, because if we disrupted this whole thing in one shot, the cars on this thing would spill all over creation, so we're phasing it in respect of the tenants and existing parking, so that as we build this, we put the underground parking here, as we build, split the underground parking and so forth, these phase, so as we add, we replace and add to the parking, so we're going to call mass disruption too, and that's sort of the main reason why we're phasing it, so each phase picks up the parking, adds the density and so forth, so that existing tenants and parking calls exist with the new development that's coming online. We've had two community meetings, one last week and one the week before, in which we walked through the project, and a lot of good ideas came from the community in terms of pedestrian access, density, traffic, green, and those revisions you see of the plan in terms of this versus this, really was garnished by a community input, planning commission in the sketch plan, and city council in the sketch plan. So it's really, the ideas that were put forth, or presented, were pulled in and brought into this, so you can see where we started and where we've come, is quite an improvement. And so, you know, sort of the help of the guidance of Kerry, commissions, neighborhood and so forth, has really helped refine and shape this plan and give it better significance. Now I'm going to talk through the two retail buildings. Yvonne, could you put this up or help with the board, just so I can show? So we have two retail buildings, this is the south building, and those are the examples, and the building's going to be a combination of stone, wood, and glass. And the idea of the glass, the different fritz, and you can see it on the banding in this, it gives us a building, a second floor, if there's areas that want to be private, we can do that dot pattern, stripe it out. In areas that want to be clear with views, we can emphasize that, so it gives a nice texture and scale of building, so if we have professional offices up here, it allows that building, so it gives it an interesting architecture. The stone softens, I'll put this up here, use the camera, the stone softens the architects of the wood inlays for the retail and so forth. The good news, I could say, on the retail, we've had very good retail activity, all the tenants that come forth are unique to the Twin Cities. So, you know, we're not getting another Five Guys or things like that, we're getting a unique type of retail that does not exist in this metropolitan area. And that's part of the reason why we did the design and the shape of the building, so we could attract unique retail and sort of, as Kerry was kind enough to mention, the high quality of it, and it's working. Edina's going to have a nice, better diversity of the type of retail that's coming with this. So as you see on the board, the stone, this element is this darker element inside the building here, the various types of glass to give the kind of activity, the clear glass on the bottom, and the accent panels within it. So there'll be a nice, light-looking retail building that has, again, entrances both on France and on the interior street, so it's two-sided retail. So the idea is that it has two fronts, and has that kind of activity that will start melding with the area. And again, this is the rear side of the building, again showing the connection on the outside looking back towards Southdale. And then underground parking, as Kerry mentioned, with this connection, the main floor plan on the retail, and then the second floor. These spaces all have options for mezzanines, so these could be two-story retail, these are option, this part is a true-story retail, part of that is to give bulk height and get more density on the street, because this building here represents 25,000 square feet in itself. Elevations, and went through the material component with the stone and glass and so forth. This is just a graphic of the materials which represents the same thing here. And again, this just references where the materials occur and where they're going to sit within the building. And again, the same reference. And then this is the second building, which has the same set of materials, just a different shape for variety and a bit of interest, and this is rare of it, again with its attendant underground parking, main floor retail, and so forth, and then the elevations, and then the same material and the reference to it. So I'm going to stop right now, and I'm going to invite Tom to really go through the landscape component of the project, so thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Tom Whitlock, president of Damon Farber Landscape Architects, 401 Second Avenue North, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Commissioners- Commissioners, I'm just going to quickly take you through the landscape. So this is the southern retail site. Certainly, quality materials are really important. Some of the materials you see on the right, the promenade along France in front of the buildings, decorative pavers, integration of lighting within those pavers, continuation of the wall that Dean mentioned by the Bank of America building, a round front creating another layer of landscape between France Avenue and that promenade up against the building. And I won't get into all the details of the landscape, but the idea is that we're celebrating all the seasons and we're picking plant material that celebrates the four seasons of Minnesota. One thing I want to point out on this plan, today, the sidewalk along France is five feet from France Avenue. So now, on the southern site, we have a twenty-foot setback from the street, and then the sidewalk along that wall, and then the promenade along the building. So that additional twenty feet allows us to get a double row of trees, which I think is significant for France Avenue. Obviously, we'll be picking large shade trees that are tolerant of county roads, salt and highly durable. So, those are some of the highlights of the materials, again wrapping those materials around the building. As Dean mentioned, people will be entering these buildings from both sides, so we want to make sure both sides are treated to an equal extent with high-quality materials that reflect the overall development. So again, some of the landscape, making sure that we're paying attention to the seasons, we're picking durable materials, having a diversity of shade trees along France Avenue is important and something that's supported by the forester. And making sure that that layer between the promenade space and the sidewalk, kind of the golden area, again has a diversity of material, creating a stronger edge from kind of the high-volume traffic along France and the retail experience up along that promenade. As Dean mentioned, at the intersections at sixty-sixth and Seventieth, the city has installed a lot of new pedestrian improvements along with contemporary lighting. So we wanted to build on the work that you've already done along France Avenue, creating, again, or extending the idea of contemporary lighting. Right now, France Avenue is lit like a street, and so getting pedestrian-level lighting along this edge will be important to enhancing the idea that this is a pedestrian environment and not just for cars. So, again, you see those kind of tall pedestrian lights that would march right down France and that public sidewalk, and then more lower-level, warm, inviting lighting, bollards and smaller garden-level lighting within that promenade space, again reinforcing the idea of warm and welcoming. I won't go through this much since Dean already talked about that, but again, trying to create that pedestrian character along France Avenue. So this is the north site. Again, a lot of similar character to what we were trying to do on the south side. On the north, we have a little bit more space to play with, so we have a thirty-foot boulevard in this location. Again, getting pedestrians away from the fast-moving traffic on France will just enhance the use of that pedestrian way along France, I think. A lot of similar, again, materials on both sides of the building. We wanted to make sure that we're cognizant that this is a two-sided building, really four-sided. This retail area has the opportunity for more restaurants, opportunities, so outdoor dining, again trying to enliven the street character, that it's not just the materials that create the pedestrian character, but having activity along that edge will be important. And again, using four-season materials. The idea of an outdoor gathering space along this edge in advance of whatever happens with the plaza in the future. Again, four-season plant material, durable and reflective of the four seasons. And then this has a similar lighting approach. Again, the contemporary lighting, lighting France Avenue, making that more pedestrian-friendly along that sidewalk, and then creating the warm, welcoming environment along that promenade next to the retail. And so this is just an image from that northern access point into the development, looking north. So you can see some of that outdoor dining and the layers of landscape between France and the development. And this is again, similar images from the other side, again trying to be cognizant that this is a four-sided building. And then, this is just sort of a bird's eye view, again along France, looking to the south. So it shows the double row of trees along France, the larger setback boulevard, that sidewalk along France, and then that low wall, which is really like a seat wall, that carries down from Bank of America, and then the transition into the promenade retail area along the buildings. So I think with that, I don't know if we want to transition to civil or...
Can I ask you a quick question before you hand over the mic? There might be some other, but just, can you possibly show us the full site and discuss whether or not there is the potential to connect that sidewalk throughout, you know, between those two phases? And what, you know, if you do have the ability to still do the two rows of boulevard trees?
Are you talking along the France Avenue side?
Right, along France Avenue.
I'm going to go through the entire presentation here, just to get to the site plan. We're getting there, there we go.
I'm going to say yes and no. The only thing worry about in here, because we have future construction of a hotel, the reason why we're like careful not overstepping our phases, we're nervous we'll tear it up again. And that's what I want to avoid, so as we complete it, we finish it, as we complete it, we finish it. But where we're doing new phases, if I get too far ahead, I'm going to have to lose it again. So, I understand your question, like to get more, but I'm trying to work with a phasing of it. So I'm going to say, I would be reticent to do it because we would disturb it all over again, because of fact, we are doing underground below these areas, the disturbance is more considerable, and I'd have to lose what we're going to put in. So I'm going to say, I understand you're suggesting to say no, because it'll make it tough for us to do the future construction and try to preserve it.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Tom?
I'm Tom Caesar, BKBM Engineers, Fifty-nine Thirty Brooklyn Boulevard, civil engineer. Now, if you start with the existing overall...
In terms of...
There, you told, right there.
So you want me right here?
I think so. So how do I zoom in?
So, you know, if you want to help, you zoom in. You say, you can zoom in there.
Oh my gosh.
It's a two-man job, it's a three-man job.
It's a three-man job.
This is what's in our union contract.
Yeah.
Two of us can't do it.
Well, if I got a mouse, I can kind of point.
Yeah, so now you can use a pointer right there, see it?
Yep, I see it, I see it. Good evening, sorry about this. So basically, I think there's, this is the existing conditions, and I kind of want to go through this first, before we start getting into the different phases and the master plan and all. Right now, most of the drainage from this site for stormwater management flows from the, flows to the west side towards Valley View Road. And Valley View Road has storm sewer in it, but it surcharges, as you're probably well aware. So it's a regional problem that it kind of goes down into Valley View Road, surcharges into catch basins, and overland flow into the parking lot areas. So that's for the stormwater management part of it. There's an existing, as you can see right here, a twenty-four, whoop, lost it, twenty-four-inch sanitary sewer, there's a couple water mains that come through here and are looped, and all these other, all these buildings out here are serviced via off of Valley View Road, the road to the north, or the road to the south, and France Avenue. Now I need to go to the master plan, I think, correct?
Project master plan or your master plan?
My master plan, I think. There we go. And then zoom, how do you do that? There you go. Okay. Got it. Thank you, sorry. So what we're looking at doing for the master plan is, we've got the underground parking that we got to be cognizant of, and we've got to get the stormwater down to the west side of the project along Valley View Road. As you can see, we've got underground storage tanks, but they're also treatment. We're a Nine Mile Creek watershed district, so we have to do stormwater quality treatment. We have to do rate control, which doesn't really pertain to this, because we're actually decreasing the hard surface. And then we got to do the floodwater management that comes from the whole regional area into our site. So we've got, as Kerry mentioned, stormwater vaults here, along here, there, there, and then up into here. Okay? The water mains, we're looking at looping those and rerouting those, and we're looking at doing some abandonment of the sanitary sewer and then reconnecting into some existing sanitary sewer. Now, how do I switch to the, let's see, the phase one? Phase two, two A?
Can I, did you hear that?
Was it way down there? None of my stuff, it's pretty, it's all black and white?
Civil phase two, there you go. This is, this is a phase two. Civil in here. See, that good?
Okay, just keep toggling back and forth on that thing, got it? Okay.
Can you just tell me which one? This one?
Yeah, that's the Bank of America one, and then I want to go to the grading plan utility. There you go. There you go. Okay. So what we're looking at doing, this is the Bank of America site down here, and this is the retail that we're looking at developing. We're removing some of the parking lot in here, respecting the Bank of America's drive entrance, their ATM machine and all that. We're looking at bringing sanitary sewer out into Valley View Road this way, grading this down, getting a ramp coming up to here to service this area up high with parking, and then bringing storm sewer down, or I should say west, to Valley View Road and into one of the partial vaults, because it's going to be kind of a Lego block thing. Once the others, the rest of the sites get developed, we'll just keep adding on to that. And then it discharges into Valley View Road. When we go to this one right here, which... On the north side, we've got the retail here, we've got the parking ramp coming down for the underground parking there. We're looking at bringing the sanitary sewer, connecting it into this existing for right now. And then, let me get, zoom in a little bit more, hold on. So we'll be connecting into the sanitary sewer there, but this is the storm sewer line here, and this is the other treatment vault right on this side right there, and that also discharges into Valley View Road. And you can see the grades, we're kind of working with the grades and tying in as best we can around this, because when the medical office building gets constructed, we're just going to be ripping that out anyway and redoing the whole thing all over again. And, I think that's all I have, unless you folks have any questions.
Since for civil?
Thank you, so, we're all here, so wherever you ask questions, we're all available. So, thank you.
I wouldn't typically ask this, I know that you're building the stormwater to standards given you by the, either the city or the Three Rivers Storm Management, but what kind of standard are you, what kind of peak capacity do you think that, I'm asking because you have so mu, you know, this prop, I'm running my thoughts together tonight, excuse me. This property has a more comprehensive stormwater management than we typically see here. What I want to ask is how much capacity, volume, or maximum volume is this system intended to be able to handle?
Well, that's, that's a good question. This twenty-two acres is broken into three separate sites, according to the watershed management plan. It's, there's a south portion, a center portion, and a north portion, and each one has a volume, so many acre-feet, and I don't know what we call what the acre-feet is off the top of my head. But what we're trying to do is get the, how do I say this, get the volume in the tank as well as treat the water. Nine Mile Creek requires that we treat the first inch of runoff, off the hard surface. So when the water goes into this vault, there's, how do I say this? You've got the vault bottom here, and you've got the outlet up here. In between the outlet and the bottom is where we're going to be doing our treatment. That's where it's being infiltrated into the soil. The rest of it is bounce, we call it, that goes to the top of the tank, and that's where we're doing the volume, not the volume control, the volume storage. Did I answer that?
That was very interesting. I did like that, it was good. I was just wondering, like, how much do you think you'll be able to handle, like, in a twenty-four-hour period if you got a big rainstorm?
Oh, we have, we're going to be handling the hundred-year flood event. So it's, it's not like the hundred-year storm event like you would normally think of. It's actually a flood event, when the whole region starts backing up into this area, we got that storage that we have to offset, because we're filling in those areas.
Tom, do you have any concern about, I'm sorry?
About the savanna, and I'm sure you don't, I'm sure you, but my curiosity's peaked, about the savanna and your underground storage tank and the infiltration, and the water infiltration, and those big oak trees that are there? Because you're fairly close to it, not with this one, but with the other one.
With the other one. Commissioner Hamilton, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I really don't. We're going to be down pretty deep, and if anything, and I'm not an arborist or horticultur at all, maybe Tom can answer that a little bit, but I don't believe so.
We're, what, you know, because it's a savanna, it's up high, our soils are sandy. It's because I know what you're saying, will we saturate and kill the oaks? No, because we're fortunately sandy soil, and these tanks are perforated, and they're set below the root profile of the oak, so that water will be going down into the groundwater, not horizontally in a savanna, because we're below their root grade. Their roots tend to grow along the surface, so we won't be affecting it. And that's one thing we've been very careful about protecting, because that's really the best natural asset of the site, and it's relatively rare that you have one that's so intact that goes back to the original formation of the area. So yeah, that's the basis of it. So that's why I pushed it further south to make sure we weren't even close to it, and not even in that lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, are you done with your presentation then?
Yes.
Okay, great. So let's open it up for any questions for the applicant. I'll look this way, go ahead, Commissioner Hoffs.
Yeah, just, first of all, I just like to compliment all of you, I think you've done an excellent job in responding to the sketch plan and responding to the Southdale Plan. I guess, I know you can't...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Could you just speak a little bit to what you're anticipating in terms of the timing of the different phases? And you're talking about 2017 for the phase two.
So spring, you know, Bank of America's under construction right now, let me get to the site plan, because that's probably the easiest way to describe it, overshot. So, this, and this is spring construction. So these two, Bank of America and the wall and all the landscaping, Trump's wall all through here is all going to be done in spring. And basically, then we start on these two buildings and all the attendant landscaping on that, where we get future phases and it may... Where we get future phases, and it may fall to places, I think this zone, this zone will come a year thereafter. We've had good activity on it. But as I said, we need to string out a little bit to protect the parking. So I can't, like, buy it all at once because of disruption. But the idea is that we hope with timing, markets, and everything that we have, we plow through this five years. If there's an economic crisis, it may be 10 years. But our goal is to really get this in place in five years and just keep going phase after phase, each following behind the next as we go through it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This side? Can we look down here? Say, Commissioner Hamilton?
Can you talk just a little bit about that interior street and how you might use it? Is that a place where on Saturday and Sunday you would have an art fair or a farmer's market? Is that sort of a thought of how you use it?
This is meant, because the one thing in this section of Edina, there really isn't any streets that can be used for public purposes outside of the promenade, which works very well. But once you get beyond that, all the streets are heavy traffic through it. So the thought that this area can be Christmas tree sales, art fair, gatherings. It's really because the idea that this may carry the traffic, this has the ability to handle that function. So it'll be a multipurpose street that has that. So the idea is, you know, as you develop this to make more of place making in here, more activities. So this becomes its own area of entertainment, function, dining, speech, Christmas tree sales, variety of uses, sailboats and the, you know, little sailboats in the pond, that kind of deal. And that's the idea because the scale of this allows it to occur, you know, too difficult along France, too difficult along Valley View. But by creating this new street and controlling this environment, it gives us opportunity to allow that to happen within the neighborhood. And that's why I did the curbless design, so it can function smoothly. Because if we put a street in the middle, it'd be broken up into segments, you know, two sidewalks. And the street, the idea of doing a curbless design allows this whole volume to function as a plaza and have that use and not be broken up by curb lines.
Did you have another one? Okay. Commissioner Navarro, did you have a? Oh, I thought you were. Anybody else? Commissioner Bennett?
I did. A little bit of traffic presentation also.
We can ask for it?
Yeah.
Let me just, Commissioner Bennett, did you have a question first?
Yeah, I'd like to really commend you guys for the incredible improvement over the sketch plan review, which we already thought was really nice. I think you've incorporated a lot of the features that we really feel are important in this area. That said, since we have full discretion, I have just a few points that I want to discuss. And, you know, you guys have probably contemplated these and have talked about them, but I just, I just don't know. So I just want to learn a few things from you guys. So I'll begin with that interior street. I guess with my experience of those and where they're really successful, or where you have the blend is, they tend to be a little more narrow versus a wide plaza. And I just, I just worry about the different uses of retail on the east side with office fading out in the evening time of that, that space not being utilized to the fullest. And I ju, I just want to know.
So part of our, you know, part of the strategy, one thing we've had, big access, so why we gave the space? We've had tremendous interest from large-scale, what I call formal casual restaurants and outdoor components. Has been a big piece of, of coming in here with major outdoor pieces to it. And the idea of why we did the width on this is to allow that to occur within this. Because some may want to be based on France, some may want to be based on the interior of the site. And so the thought is we want to give enough breathing room that they could do outdoor bar, a little outdoor service, elements like that to do it. So the thought is if we timed it too much, we'd limit that possibility. Because that's, you know, the idea if it can handle that kind of use in that kind of setting has sort of a decent scale to it. So we get back to the perspective in here. It would be a nice pleasant, and still allow cars to go by. You know, because remember, I still have to handle automobiles on this. I can't just make it exclusively a pedestrian street because I still need a private access to buildings and through it. So the thought is that extra width allows both elements to occur, allows this dining and even allows retail on here and still gives enough capacity to go through it. So that's why it's a little wider than what you may say is a tight traditional retail street because of the food aspect that is going to be incorporated on here.
Sure. So I guess another question is, you know, like the gentle meander of it and even could challenge it to even more meander, which gives some more space to different retail elements. And I guess from the landscaping plan on it, I know there's, it's very tree-heavy on the west side of the site. But even through that area, it tends to be light. And how much of the landscaping is going to be dictated by the tenants?
The landscape?
Until that street?
The idea is that the landscaping in here, you know, obviously we may have a bit of, the landscaping in here, we're sort of considering the realm of the development. And this will be established by the development in here. And so we will basically dictate the landscaping in here unless the tenant has a special request. I'll still work with them and accommodate their need as we go through it. One aspect of this, and then we get to the plan in terms of design of this, because we have to be careful. These streets here, we designed to be utility streets also. And why that's significant is we kept these with no underground garage here and through here. So we can really develop full-height landscaping on the east-west streets. This area here will be punctuated by underground garages. So we're going to have to be a little bit more creative in terms of how we develop the landscaping when we get to this plan and the placement of trees. So the idea is that we go heavy here, heavy here with full trees. These will have to design tree boxes to handle some of this because there's underground garage that's going to occur in this zone. So it'll be some variation we get to develop of it in terms of playing with the trees. But we really want to keep these two major ones not having a garage because those can go to full-height, full-scale. This will be a little bit more of a hardscape wood trees because it will have a garage below it on the, on the north-south portion of it.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was just curious as to, it seems like the landscaping's sparse relative to the rest of the site for the hardscape reasons you're talking about. But I could see that looking pretty bare except for some big events or if those spaces are actually used by the tenants. So, I mean, that's what makes, for instance, Tavern on France special, they have that outdoor.
Component.
Experience. You know, Centennial Lakes, you have very heavy landscaping with more forest season. There's, you know, there's coniferous trees, for instance, that, you know, stay year-round. And I know your challenge with, you know, site constraints with underground parking. But just that, that area, I, I guess I'd welcome more of an intimate feel even. I just worry about the after, you know, just looking bare.
And that's a fair statement because, so let me get to the landscape plans here. Because it's part of the master plan, we didn't hit the detail in it heavy because we see the tenants. We basically sort of gave the vision. Our goal is to get to the same level of development as we get into actual design of the phases. And then, excuse me, I'm getting to the landscape plan here because I want to go to Tom's work. Our goal is to get to this level of intensity of landscaping in that area once we actually shape and develop it. Because we sort of gave a high-level idea what this could be. But in terms of the intensity of landscaping you see proposed on the east-west building and the detail, that's what'll go on that interior street. But right now, because it's a phase later in the master plan, or exactly the things, we gave a general idea of it. But once we get into detailed design, it'll be landscape intense like the two A and two B buildings are. So our tent is to give it a lot more richness. We agree with you on that, just that. Okay. In this preliminary phase, I don't get too specific because I got to see how tenants lay out and phases develop and all that. Then we'll refine it with the intensity that you're looking for. Because I agree with you, it needs that density. But I don't know enough information to get to that fine grain yet.
Right. And then Kerry alluded to the two plaza ponds or whatever, that those are actually part of the stormwater system. Yet I didn't see that necessarily on those civil plans. And just want you to kind of explain how.
Well, they may, and you know, part of the stormwaters, we're going to use that for, you know, because of filtration, we'll reuse that for irrigation, recycling, and pond management. So the idea that those tanks and the layers, because of this filtration, taking it off the top. Roof water is clean, we can use that for ponds. Parking lot water needs to be filtered, that can be used for irrigation. So there's a segregation of the system in terms of what water goes out. Because the roof water is just natural, there's no oil greases or anything with it. So you can use that for water features. The parking lot water would be used for irrigation, site support, things like that in terms of the landscape component in that area. So that's really how we split off the water uses on it.
Okay. One thing that was brought up the last time was kind of the curb appeal from France as you're heading southwards, as you hit the corner of 66 on France. It looks very similar of, I don't know if there's going to be a more prominent, not, not there, but farther north, the, the main corner.
Hang on.
Of, that really welcomes you to that.
I'll get there.
To that area. And I don't know if there's going to be signage there that I just didn't see in the depiction. Or I know there was mention of maybe a more prominent feature there. I, I know you kind of talk about it more being interior to the site, but just want to hear about.
So you're talking, I'm almost there, I think. Oh, I got that view in here. This corner, correct. Yeah, because the thing that's not in here and what the overlay is going to occur is will there be, in what we're thinking of, a major art sculpture component that'll occur on this? And the answer is yes. Once we get to this piece of it, that will be a corner to really make a, you know, the city put in these light elements to start scaling intersection. The idea is there'd be element in here also that would start to establish that component to identify this corner. Because they're just sort of a gateway as you come down France heading south. And there will be that component put in this. Right now, you know, to get closer to this building, we'll get to a point of defining the artist and sort of the nature of it and how it'd be put together. But scale-wise, and I don't know if you're familiar with it, in St. Louis Park, there's a development called Tower Light. It's on 36 and Wooddale.
Yep.
They built that concrete element. But the idea is something substantial like that to create an element would occur on this corner.
Yeah, I was, I mean, with such a prominent site and an amazing experience as you get to it, you, I was just kind of expecting a little more wow on that corner. And I guess my last thing for now, it hasn't been discussed much, but some of the measures you've taken are inherently that. But just a discussion as to sustainability with design and construction. I know with stormwater management, you're doing some of that. But with, with energy and any innovative features, I know with multi-use, especially with retail, you know, getting tenant-occupied spaces, you know, you have to do that now. It's not going to happen later. So, you know, green roofs, different ways you move water, you know, solar, wind, just, you know, tunnels. I, I don't know if any of that's been contemplated or where that is. But to me, that, that kind of stuff needs to be really an intrinsic part of this, this part right now before we get farther along.
And it will, as we get through the larger, I mean, really what we're looking at is what I call sort of the environmental pieces now, which is stormwater, landscape, elements of that nature. The green we're still looking at, don't know if we'll do it or not because of the nature of the buildings and the depth of the realtor. So I don't want to commit to that because I don't know. But in terms of environmental, we probably won't do it as LEED, but use LEED standards. Because the problem with LEED is the commissioning fees are brutal. But all the projects we've done, and the ones on France, who's always taken it to LEED standards. So we do intend to take the buildings at that level. Solar depends, you know, because it's going to the future and how it develops, we have to see. It's getting more and more efficient and better and better. And that'll be components to look at going forward on that. So I don't want to say no to it, I don't want to say yes to it. I want to see what lays out because of revolutions, so rapid on it come spring, we could adapt it. But right now, it's sort of want to tack it on the environmental and tack it on the building sustainability in terms of materials, energy use, and those there. And then start looking at alternative energy sources as an overlay and see how that makes sense to the project.
Yeah. Because, I mean, just to me, having some innovative features that, you know, connect with people, for instance, Centennial Lakes. I mean, the whole thing is, you know, amazing stormwater management system. And the fact that you get to experience that, that itself is very innovative. And, I mean, I didn't see anything in here that really was screaming out.
Yeah.
An innovation there. So I just want to know that, that stuff's going to be implemented here.
The answer is yes, but I have a different scale. You know, Centennial Lakes was 125 acres, so there's room to create that. This is a little tighter and denser. So like, can I, you know, can I expose the water? Not quite going to do this. So I got to work with more fine-grain elements as opposed to large scale. And so that's the essence of where, it's probably going to be driven in that kind of area where water segregation elements like that is really what's probably giving more of the idea. Like you say, as I look at elements I would add in terms of solar and those components. So that's going to be the basic approach.
If we're snow removal on the interior street, if it's all curbless and plaza-like, are you guys going to have some kind of element of, you know, heat with underground garage or?
Part of it is, you know, and snow removal depends how we look at it. And this is getting to, you know, initially with just the first phase, you know, there's enough snow storage into it. But as we go further, do we get into a solar, snow-melting water recycling? Maybe. And we get to years three, four, five, in terms of handling it, that may be the possibility downstream as the density increases. Right now, we can just sort of push it because we got room to just push it. But as we build into density, we'll start looking at ideas how to manage and recycle snow and that component. And part of the idea is a curbless street is to give that advance and just, you know, so you don't get the wind rolls in the street and all that. So it ends a much more friendly, open environment than your traditional street with round piles of snow around it. So that's sort of the idea within it.
Well, thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Navarro, do you have questions on traffic? Did you want a full traffic study review or do you just have some specific, specific questions?
I would like to hit the highlights of the traffic. I, I think this is a fantastic plan, but I think, and so it's almost like a good time to bring up this point. I mean, I think that traffic might be the Achilles' heel of the development in that area eventually as we start loading more things up. So I do know in the traffic report that there were a couple of intersections that are identified as possibly being Level E. And it seems like we're getting, we're, we're, we've had a few meetings now, and not just on this project, but on other projects, where we're starting to see Level E, Level F intersections. And we're saying, well, that's okay. It almost kind of reminds me though, I mean, what I'm worried about is it kind of reminds me of when I was a kid, the big thing at restaurants was to get a salad bar. That was a big deal. You know, there was a King's Inn up the road on Highway 100. Salad bar. And it was an art to, salad bars are great. It was an art to actually see how much you could load into your bowl, you know, get some spinach, get some broccoli, some tomatoes, some carrots, some garbanzo beans. You know, the, the potato salad looked good. And before you knew it though, the trick was to be able to get all those good things back to your table without spilling on the ground. And we're getting a lot of good things coming through. This, this project, I think, is a fantastic project. I particularly like to call it the landscaping. I thought that was, that's going to be very attractive. But everything, don't, anything I didn't call out, don't take that. I mean, every single presentation tonight has been outstanding. But I'm worried as we look ahead, you know, I like to hear a little bit about the traffic on this site, but I also like to keep us in mind. I mean, the traffic on this site, but I also like to keep us in mind. I mean, I, I worry that one day we're going to get to that point where we're going to have a hard time getting everything around, because we're going to, we're starting to accumulate these Es and possibly Fs. So I'd like to hear a little bit about, you know, how people think that traffic's going to go. In particular, I had just a couple of items regarding traffic, and that's on, on France Avenue. I'd like to understand, kind of, particularly looking ahead, we hear about the lights, and we're going to be monitoring the lights, but as the traffic starts getting busier, are we going to be getting more backups on the northbound France Avenue, or, you know, or on the southbound, as people are getting a green light to turn left from northbound France onto this development, as things get built out? So, with that, you know, thank you for coming up tonight.
Sure. Mike Spack with Spack Consulting, 5708 West 36th Street, just down the road in St. Louis Park. And yes, this is obviously a very big development, and it will be generating significant traffic. We did a full traffic impact study for the site, 400-plus pages, and certainly not going to be going through the full study this evening. But we did look at all of the intersections around the site, and we looked at all the phases and how the traffic will be generated by each phase of the development, and how that will interact. We found that in the evening rush hour, we're going to be adding about 800 vehicles coming in and out of the site, and in the morning rush hour, about 650 vehicles. Normally, that would be a big concern. But the site is bounded by big roads. France Avenue is a six-lane county facility. Valley View and 66th are both four-lane roads. We did find today, 66th and France is just tipped into that level of Service E. Traffic engineers grade traffic A, B, C, D, E, F, and E and F is getting into congested, that we would like to fix, whenever possible. With some small, small traffic signal timing changes, we can get that back into Level Service D, and we can actually maintain that. We analyzed it out 10 years and looked at background growth. Now, we did not analyze significant development at Southdale or any of the other significant area development, we just looked at typical background growth rates. And basically, we found Kerry hit on a couple of the elements that actually, all of our intersections, we have two traffic signals serving the site already. We have left turn lanes all the way around, serving the site. Really, our one physical recommendation was, right now, there's just a single lane planned out here, and we found some congestion coming out of the site in the evening, and we'd like a little bit of a right turn lane around that, just to let people get out here and use that kind of secondary route to get to 62. And then, of course, best practice is update signal timing plans every three to five years. And we believe with doing that along France Avenue, we'll be able to handle the traffic. Interesting time in the traffic profession. Car ownership is trending down, younger kids are not getting their driver's licenses the way my generation did. Who knows what's going to happen with autonomous vehicles? So I applaud this development for really repurposing a lot of these giant empty parking lots that we have out there. The site will, according to city code, need a little bit of parking variance, but it is a very good mixed-use site, that Commissioner Bennett kind of talked about with the offices and the retail, and these uses are going to peak at different times. So we think kind of the peak parking load is going to be about 1,700 vehicles. Don't hold me to that if you move the art fair over to here. This is kind of normal conditions. But developer really is trying to right-size the parking here, to have enough, kind of that Goldilocks, but not provide way extra that never gets used.
I, I think developers are doing a great job on the parking, and I, I think the height is, I know height has been an issue, as Commissioner Barubi mentioned earlier, and I think for the similar reasons, as you were speaking about changes in styles with new generations of people, I think the height, I think density is going to be desired, height like that will be desired. I, I don't know how you get around it with the traffic, and I, I would, I would not let the traffic be a reason to not go forward with this plan. But what I'm wondering is how we can address it in a proactive manner, particularly, as I mentioned, we're, we're seeing, not just tonight, I'm sorry, if, if any reason I'm picking on this project a little, it's because of the quality of the project. It just seemed like a good time to bring it up. But we're seeing more and more, you know, undesirable ratings on our streets. I don't know if we do any kind of qualitative, you know, that's a quantitative measure, I don't know, do we do any kind of qualitative measure, like citizen satisfaction with transit, NEDINA? Do we measure changes resulting from the living streets, implementation of the living streets programs? Are we measuring any changes in the way people transit? And then I'm, I'm wondering if, if, if and when would be a good time to do a, take a comprehensive look at the transit, NEDINA, maybe the transportation department's doing it separate and apart from the comprehensive plan, of course, because I, I don't think we'd want to get that detailed, and here's what we're going to do in our city comprehensive plan. But I, I do worry when you start seeing, in, in the quality systems world, you start seeing what they call errors, and you, and you know, sometimes you try to fix that specific error, and sometimes you take a deeper systematic look and say, what is causing this error? What can we do to prevent future errors? And I, I don't know if we're, are we doing any of that? We, we have good consultants?
Yeah, I can take that, yes, we are. As part of, you know, we were looking at the greater Southdale area and the land use piece of it. At the same time, Transportation Engineering Department is looking at traffic in the Southdale area as a whole. WSB is doing, they've created a model, and they're anticipating different density levels within the Southdale area. One of the scenarios that they're running is a density far greater than what's proposed here. So we are, that is, and that all get woven into the comprehensive plan. So that study is underway at, at this time. So we will have an account of densities even far greater than what's contemplated here.
And, and that's great to hear, Kerry. And one thing that we hear from time to time is that the county may have different goals than the city, and I don't know if we need, you know, I know that even, and I know that our, our city, our city leadership, our elected city leadership is very involved with regional transit, but I, I'm wondering, like, 494 and 62 are impacted by France Avenue even, and so are we getting, do we need, is that another party that needs to be engaged in this conversation, or are all those conversations already happening with the county and the 494?
Yes, they, they are happening. Staff has made a couple of trips out to Hennepin County to meet with their staff, to present them our Southdale vision plan, projects like this, we've looked at this one specifically, and those will continue to go on.
Okay. Thanks. I mean, you know, I'm sure we're going to return to this topic, and maybe, maybe from time to time, we could get updates on kind of a just general traffic management, or traffic improvement plans, or something. Thank you.
Yes, we'll be talking about that later this evening, as we talk about the comprehensive plan a little bit, and different commissioners that'll be assigned to commissions, and that can be part of that discussion as well.
Great. Well, this is a public hearing, and is there any public that would like to come and speak? And please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. And you get three minutes, so there'll be a little light. Great. If you're going to be there, there you go.
My name's Scott Solberg, I live at 4201 West 66th Street. And I think if you don't mind, I'll use their plan here, it's related to the traffic. So I live just down the road this way. And for one thing, I had the topic of, we need a stretch of sidewalk along here, because there is sidewalk here, and it ends. So for us to walk to Southdale, we have to go across and down, so I'm hoping this crosswalk here and sidewalk stays as part of the plan. So that was great to see. But the traffic-related issue, and this doesn't illustrate it real well, but there's a traffic light here that, and it's, like gentlemen said, four lanes. It very quickly goes down to two-lane road about up in here. So what happens frequently, far too often, two cars will line up here, and the person in the left lane is going to go fast, or in the right lane is going to go fast and get in front of the one on the left. And the one on the left says, no way is that going to happen, so they race, and we hear the horn honking, and so on. So I don't know if there'd be a way to narrow it down, you know, to one westbound lane on this side of the light, to prevent that racing. And it's not very well marked. The other thing that happens, not as often, but people don't know this right lane is ending, and they just kind of meander over into the left, and again, there's horn honking. So, it, it's not a well-designed intersection, and I'm wondering if that can somehow be addressed as part of the traffic plan. And the other thing, 66th Street here, where it is down to two lanes, it, it's a nice wide road, which just makes people want to drive fast. So, you know, I don't know if those radar speed limit signs could be put up, or anything to kind of dampen the speeds, because it sounds like we'll have 800 more cars a day, and so on. So, anything we can do to alleviate that would be great. Thank you.
Just real quick, Kerry, how far can we go with the recommendations, you know, off the site?
Yeah, that, that would, in existing condition, we would ask our city engineer to take a look at. We do have our consulting engineer, Mr. Spack could maybe comment on it, but that, that probably is a separate issue for engineering to take a look at.
Can we put that in as a request to look at that?
We can, sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Do it once. Do you want to, like, use the screen if you want to point things out? I think maybe the center's good, with the microphone, and just...
Am I on?
You are.
My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 Southdale Road. And I think all of you remember the article in the paper by John Reinon, who said, "This was really a wonderful development, as long as you lived a mile away." And that's why I'm here tonight. I don't live a mile away, it's in my backyard. I know that I'm very concerned, and my neighbors are very concerned, about the density and the height issues. And you will be hearing more and more from us about that. But I'm also very concerned about the traffic, so thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate it. I do have a copy of the traffic study with me tonight, and it is a big traffic study. And Mr. Spack, thank you very much for being here tonight, because my question was, was this traffic study done in isolation, or was it part of everything else that's going on? I'm looking at the commercial development tracker, and there are 13 different projects in my neighborhood. I kind of got my answer tonight, that no, but I think that really has to happen. Traffic is already an issue along France Avenue. I've had friends comment to me, going to the hospital, how terrible it was to get there. One of the clinics on France Avenue is now telling their patients, "When you come for your appointment, start early. You know traffic in NEDINA." And I thought, is that what we want to be known for? Terrible traffic? That was kind of hurtful. I've lived here for 40 years, always loved the area, beautiful green space, wonderful things to look at. And now I'm looking at more density, and of course, more traffic. And something that wasn't addressed at all was cut-through traffic in our neighborhood. It's already happening. We have a lot of young families that have moved into our neighborhood. They've invested in the homes, and I worry about those kids because of the traffic. And to be honest with you, if I was faced with France Avenue, I'd cut through my neighborhood too, because it's a problem. It's a problem on 66th, it's a problem on 70th. It's very easy to cut through my neighborhood. But I am worried about all those kids. There was an accident not long ago where a child was hit. So I think these are issues that we really do have to address. And I have another question. You know, I keep hearing about pedestrians, and pedestrians, and pedestrians, and I, you know, I'm out and about a lot, and I'm thinking, I don't know who crosses France Avenue with any kind of safety and issue. That's a terrifying thing to do. And I see you're going to cut me off in a minute, so, real quick, Oak Savannah, I keep hearing about the Oak Savannah, and to be honest with you, I miss the buckthorn. When I leave my neighborhood on 68th, I now see two dumpsters, cars, and parking lots. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Owen Hershey at 6804 Southdale Road. It was a good presentation, however, they're starting out comparing it to the West End and Excelsior and Grant. Well, I'm not totally sure on Excelsior and Grant, but West End is not residential, the next block over. That concerns me. When he was talking about the traffic study, and Spack indicated that they had to work on the right turn lane, when this gentleman was talking earlier, or one of them, there is talking about the left-hand turn lane on Valley View into the parking lot. Which brings me to believe that a lot more traffic is going to go on Valley View. They're asking for a variance for parking. Right now, we've already determined that traffic in the area can be or may be an issue. Now you're cutting down the amount of parking for all these people. I'm not sure where they're going to go. Hopefully, they're not going to go into the residential park. When we have big events in the neighborhood already, like Susan B. Coleman, they're on our streets. Not that I'm saying they can't, but they're already there. They keep calling these two streets through the development, they're really just entrances and exits from the parking lots, or the development. They're really not what we call streets. And if they are streets, who's now maintaining them? Are they part of the development, or are they part of the city? Because if they're really streets, I think streets are the cities. They talk about the north, southbound, parking, pedestrian thoroughfare. If we're going to start putting different events through there, that's going to force that traffic outside the development again. Commissioner Olson brought up pedestrian access from the Bank of America, the retail on this side, and the retail on that side. And if that's not going to be developed until Phase 3, 4, or 5, because of cost, people are going to be driving from one end to the other end. They're not going to be able to walk through. So I'm not sure how it's going to be cohesive between the two of them. The other part is, for the greater Southdale area, this was zoned four stories, we are having traffic issues. And now, all of a sudden, we're going to eight stories? Yes, it's not going above what's already there, but it's definitely going to increase density, which they're asking for a variance on, and aesthetically, and it's just going to bring a lot more people. As a resident, living not too far, I think I like some of the plan, but not all of it. So it's very concerning as a resident.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Scott Roberts of the Vets.
Hello, I'm Scott Roberts of the Vets, 6801 Southdale Road, and this is my backyard right here. And so this project is in my backyard. And I would agree with what the last two ladies said that, you know, this is a beautiful development. If you live a mile away, it'd be a great place to visit. But I've been living here for 12 years and there's been different issues with noise and light and different things like that, that they don't follow the ordinances and different things like that. Even like this Halloween, it was 11:30 at night and constant noise, garbage being thrown in the dumpster and things like that. And one of the things that I don't mind, and I don't know if you guys mind at all, but it's kinda nice to see the sun come up in the morning. And by adding another eight-story building over here, let's try to keep that to four. If we can do that, that'd be absolutely wonderful. And then also with the traffic and then density, that is a major concern, especially pulling out this intersection here on a Saturday. If you're pulling out at around 10 o'clock on Saturday, there's more traffic and more traffic. And we're just gonna add to it. I want you guys to really put a lot of thought into that. And then the other thing is, with this Oak Savannah, they talk about the Oak Savannah, I would like you guys to go out there and take a visit and count the oak trees, count the ash trees, and count the cottonwood. There's a big difference between a cottonwood and an oak tree. I mean, the population between the oak trees and the cottonwood, it's pretty similar. I mean, you could call it a cottonwood forest if you wanted. The other thing that, maybe a lot of things that you guys don't see on a day-to-day during rush hour traffic, is a lot of this traffic right in this area, they will come up to this intersection and they'll take a left-hand turn here and scoot this way, trying to avoid the backup on this traffic here going north. So I don't know if that's ever been in consideration here, but there is a lot of traffic that'll cut through that way. And from day one when I moved in, you know, obviously, the Edina Police Department know that this is a major fundraiser area. I know they probably play games and different things like that, see who can get the most money, but you know, they put their motorcycle right up on that sidewalk and they're just collecting money, which is great, you know? We sometimes take a bottle of water out there, making sure that they're making money for us. But that's another concern, getting more traffic down there. I'd like to make sure that we're taking a really good look at that, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And if, I know when you look at this project, you're looking at the tax base, the money that's gonna bring in, but please, don't see the dollar signs. Please listen to the residents that see this all the time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth Hershey, also at 6804 Southdale Road. I have a couple concerns regarding the traffic inflow in the area. On Valley View, you talk about pedestrian-friendly, getting from our neighborhood over to Southdale. I do it. I do walk across both this area here and this area here, which are sometimes challenging. On 69th Street, I don't know who put in the two different types of pedestrian hit the button and decide to walk across the street. There's one that flashes constantly, which may be undergoing some renovation right now, I'm not sure. The one closest to York Avenue has pushed the button and it flashes only when somebody's there. I don't know if we have any plans to put something of that nature on Valley View, which might slow down traffic through this area. Everybody talks about the Oak Savannah and the walkway from 68th here through the savanna. Right now, you run into buildings, you can't get anywhere that way, you have to go around the 60, I think it's called 6800. So definitely, traffic and speed along Valley View is a concern. And the fact that I don't know, there is no sidewalk through here currently that connects Valley View to France. And I liked your suggestion, Commissioner Olson, regarding putting in the sidewalk on the Valley View side to start with. That would be great. And yeah, we're looking at piles of dead wood currently in our Oak Savannah, not necessarily beautiful trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Persia, 6917 Cornelia Drive. First, I'd like to say something about the Southdale Planning Group that I think three of you at least are members of. From my own perspective, I don't think you've been moving fast enough and you have not taken on some of the pertinent issues that need to be delineated first. And that's the development of the west side of France Avenue. We've got many buildings online and they can't be taken on in isolation. It's a total area and it has to be thought of that in such a way. The building code in Edina, for all practical purposes, doesn't exist. It's planned unit development, which is every building now. Every building project is that. I find it interesting, anybody who comes in here for development wants exceptions, and that exception rolls over into planned unit development. In other words, the existing code for density, for parking, for height, doesn't mean much because it's always revised. I'd like to make a presentation sometime, I've given this idea to the mayor twice, he's gonna hear from me again about it. Since I'm involved with natural resources, I'd like to talk about the Southdale area in terms of carrying capacity, which transcends many different things, not just single developments and not just density and height. The one thing that's really missing here also is traffic. There hasn't been one single, not one single creative solution how to deal with traffic in the Southdale area. As the developers heard from me last week, the problem on France Avenue has been going on for at least 35 years. The traffic has been maxed out for what it was designed for over 35 years ago. And every single building higher, more dense, increases traffic. It increases cut-through traffic to those residents, especially on the west side of France Avenue. It has a tremendous impact on the free flowage and whether people even wanna use the France Avenue and patronize the retailers on that street. I'm also concerned about green space. Green space is an afterthought now. We ought to have some requirement matching density to green space. Because you put walkways in, that's not green space. A four-foot box for a tree is not green space. But we need to keep and maintain and increase green space, which we seem to be losing constantly. We're even asked to give up city land now to have water retaining basins to handle the development that's going on. I'm concerned about parking. We're losing 800 mandated parking spots on this project. We have a hotel, which automatically means lots of in-and-outs for usage. We're gonna have an eight-story condo building with 70 condo units in it. We're gonna have a medical arts unit with lots of traffic in and out. All this increases traffic in the whole area. And we have to think holistically about this whole area. And those of you on the Southdale-France Planning Group have to come to grips, not with a principle, but what limits and strictures on how things can move along in a reasonable fashion. And job number one is to take into account our residents on the west side of France and actually, who surround the whole Southdale area. So I ask you to consider that very, very seriously before we start increasing site after site after site for buildings. They're always higher and more dense. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Good evening, I'm Josh Krasnick, I live at 4611 Arden Avenue. I had no intention of commenting on this tonight, but it became a very interesting conversation. And I thought I'd share just a little bit of personal experience, because I actually don't care if this thing gets built or not. I have no dog in this, I don't live near this place, I live in Edina. The one thing I thought was interesting is, prior to, three months ago, I lived at 7040 Lanham Lane in West Edina, up by the school, kind of in Indian Hills area. My wife and I lived over there for five years, my wife grew up over in that part of town, right by Braemar. And we moved recently, about 90 days ago, because we wanted to be closer to amenities. When we lived over in the West Edina part, 7040 Lanham Lane, we had nowhere to walk to. We'd have to get in our cars every single day to go to a restaurant. Saying corrected, there was one restaurant called TJ's, I don't know if you guys have ever heard of it. But it was the only restaurant we could ever go to to get anything to eat. When I look at this plan, it kinda reminds me a lot of 50th and France. We live on Arden Avenue now, three blocks from France and 50th. We walk literally every single night to the stores around there. And they're very similar to what's being proposed here. Now, you might say, well, Southdale has this as well. But walking to Southdale is like in my mind, walking into the Mall of America, it's a huge shopping district. This is all strip retail, service retail, stuff that you can walk into and get back home to. And I just speak from personal experience, living on Arden Avenue now, coming from Lanham Lane. How much happier we are to have this retail this close to us. So that's all I say. At the end of the day, I don't really care if this gets built, but I thought it was interesting personally, how much we enjoy having these service retails that close to your home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So now we'll bring it back up to the Planning Commission for comments. Anybody want to start? Commissioner Nemiroff?
I just wanna capture some, repeat something I said earlier, I think this is a great plan, and I am in favor of it for many reasons. But I do wanna capture something one of the residents stated and repeat it, which is that, I do think that we as a city, we are very pro-development and we are finding lots of ways to put development in, and for a lot of good reasons. But I worry that we're losing, we're thinking that it's cost-free, and that's because the benefits are very concentrated. We hear about those, staff hears about those from the people that benefited, but the costs, and there are costs, are diffuse and they're spread individually and they're spread on a per-project basis. Each individual citizen of Edina feels the costs a little each time, they don't feel it the same concentration that the developers feel it when they, when we vote an approval. And so we're not, as a city, we're not really thinking how we can address those costs ahead of time. So, one of the residents that just spoke, talked about being creative with dealing with the traffic. And I think it is time to address traffic, not by having to, you know, something more than having a discussion with county and MINDOT about, well, do we put a pork shop here, do we take the pork shop out? Or do we put some lights here, do we take the lights out? I think we as a city, I think we'll benefit from it too. We're gonna have to invest, we're gonna, but we should come up with some ways to mitigate traffic for people and we need to become, I think, be creative, come up with some investments. And I actually think it'll help us with getting more developments in too. I think it'll improve the city and, but I do think, at a certain point in time, we should consider these developments, particularly in a region like this. Maybe there should be some kind of cost of, so to say, developing this area and then have that cost. We already have a park fund dedication fee that we ask certain developers to pay for. Maybe there needs to be a transportation development fund for certain regions and things get contributed to, and then that goes to funding some kind of solution. So we don't continue to have, either on a measurable scale, Level E or Level F traffic, or on a qualitative scale, the growing resident dissatisfaction that I think we're hearing and that I think is going to continue to increase. So, I am in favor of this project, it's an outstanding project, thank you very much. These issues that I'm raising are not the issues of the developer here. I do know that some of the developers that have come before us would like to get their arms around and participate in some kind of creative solution, because I think it would be to the benefit of their properties also. But, thank you very much, and that's just perhaps more of a longer-range statement.
Sorry, I keep going, sorry, sorry. Commissioner, I would just echo some of those comments, I think it's a great project. I really like that it's walkable. That being said, I agree with the traffic issues, and it's no fun to walk across six lanes of heavy traffic. So, you know, we want our city to be more walkable, and yet, I think we need to focus on a strategic plan on how we're gonna address traffic, because it is a huge issue. And I don't know if there's a way that we can add our thoughts, you know, the people who spoke today, thank you for being here, not living in the area, we don't know necessarily what it's like. But some of the comments, I think were great, as far as, you know, creating, you know, lights in those areas that are, you know, heavier traffic and, you know, maybe on 66th, if there's something you can do at that intersection. I think those are all great comments that should be recorded and passed on to make it more pleasant for the people who live there. I don't think it, those comments should stop this development though, because it fits with what we're looking for and I think it's really well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, I, you know, I wish we had seen this presentation a few weeks ago. It certainly would have helped in my review of what I had seen, what is presented here versus what we saw maybe two weeks ago. It's been very good. I found two things compelling. One, Carrie's, the staff report and their feelings about the project. And then mostly Mick Johnson's answer to, with their answers to Mick Johnson's issues that he had proposed in his review. And as I went down through all 11, there was, to me, a satisfactory, either an answer or a explanation. And to me, I'd like to defer to that Southdale Planning Group for all the work they've done. And their response to me is probably the critical, you know, decision for me to make, you know, how does this project meet those goals? So, that's my, thanks.
Commissioner Hobbs?
Yeah, actually, to speak to the, how it meets the goals of the Southdale Group, I think this, they're doing a spectacular job of achieving those goals. And I really do welcome a project like this, because certainly from my perspective, I think other folks who are on the Southdale Group, I mean, we were aspiring for something like this, in terms of its quality and in terms of how that's looking at transportation issues. I think we're in a period where that's evolving. And it's difficult right now to plan for transportation. We have to accommodate the cars that are here, but as we're hearing, how people use cars, how they move around, that's changing. So we need to be thinking in terms of what we can do in the future to allow for accommodating how we might change, how we move around in terms of transportation. So, I think this project does an excellent job of doing that, getting rid of all that surface parking is just, to me, it's just a spectacular use of a lot of space at this site. So, from my perspective, I think, again, they've done a very good job and something that we can hopefully emulate elsewhere in the Southdale area.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
I agree with Commissioner Hobbs about the underground parking, it's just another great feature of this project. One thing that I would point out, as I understand, and there's other commissioners on the dais here today who probably understand this better than I do, as you move south on France Avenue, doing under, it's appearing that doing underground parking to this extent is more difficult because of the soil conditions. So, this is, I think, I think we're all, at least I haven't heard anything other than universal accolades for this project, but I think some of the solutions that came here to things like parking would not be available elsewhere in the region. So, again, I would, I'm just bringing it up because I think we're at the point where we really need to start thinking creatively now to address these issues, and I think it'll benefit that whole development region.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just have a few. Can I, are you, do you need to go? Go for it.
Sure, if I could, just because it's on the topic of traffic and the big picture. I think we're at a, because of the WSB study that's going on, and we're transitioning here, or beginning the comprehensive plan, and we've talked about having a kind of a joint work session with the Transportation Commission, it might be a good idea in our near future to have kind of a joint work session, where we have WSB come in, and we take a look at the big picture of, you know, where they're at with that study, the findings, kind of give the planning commission and the Transportation Commission kind of a big-picture overview. So I'll plan on setting that up in the near future.
Carrie, yeah, that's one of the things I was going to ask about. Well, I also think that you guys did a great job, and you really listened to what we said, and we really appreciate that. I'm just going to bring up again what I mentioned before. As much as we can condition or request some of the sidewalks continuous around the site, and even throughout the site wherever we can, I know that you're going to be coming back and adding additional phases, but if you can look at that a little bit closer to see, even if it, because if it is going to be like five or 10 years, you know, let's get some of that in there now, and really make this a little bit more of a walkable site, as, you know, today. I really liked the suggestion of Commissioner Bennett about looking at meandering that Wunorf, and looking to see what you can do to that to make that a little bit more, you know, I think that's kind of a large space-looking space, too. Carrie, can we add a condition, or as part of PUD, or to, that they do have to provide a little bit more of an art feature, or can, again, I'm always asking you, how far can we go with some of the larger-picture conditions?
Yeah, you can. I think that, I think that's reasonable, and the applicant is agreeable, that, you know, as part of that medical office, when that phase is developed, that we would expect to see some kind of an art feature on the corner.
I totally agree with all the traffic. That's been one of my, I always harp on that every time, because we do have to look at the big picture. It is congested there. We are starting, like, except F intersections, which, ugh. But, so, and I really like the traffic study that was performed, and you had a lot of really good conditions in there, and I just, I'm not sure I'm seeing all those conditions reflected in the engineering memo, which is part of the conditions. So, or am I missing that, or are they?
You could add, so it's clear, you add specifically the recommendations in the traffic study.
Okay. Because part of that, I think, did cover some of the crosswalks and information like that, so I think that would be really, really good to do. That's it, what I had. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone ready to make a motion? Commissioner Nemiroff?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve with subject conditions and staff report and the engineering report, and with the recommendation of the sidewalk on the Valley View side, is that what?
Well, and also to really look at France Avenue, too, what they can do with that.
If there's anything, I understand the concern that they raised, but...
Right. But that's going to be a long-term...
But it's a sidewalk on France, but it's crappy.
Yeah. And 66, right, on the north side.
Sidewalk on 66.
Right.
I think that would be, that would be a good value for everyone at this time to have the sidewalk going around the property, so I would like to recommend that that be added, and then...
The meandering...
Please make a friendly amendment on what you think.
Can I do that?
What's that?
Can I do that?
The feature on the corner?
The art feature, and the meandering street.
What they said.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to include those things, and if, maybe...
Sheila, if you'd like to speak on sale, however, if you just...
I think if we can get a second, and then we can...
Oh, I second that, or I'd like to add a friendly amendment, to add the more articulated or broader meander. Is that how you say that?
I guess I have a question.
Wait, do we need to, someone need to second my motion?
Well, that's, we have to have a second first. Yeah, so...
You have a motion?
Okay, I make my motion.
Right.
Would you like to second it?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Are you wanting to second it?
No.
Sorry.
Okay, so now we've got a motion, we've got a second. Okay.
I have a question. Since this is Phase, and, you know, we're also approving Phase 2A, 2B, you know, the meander and some of this stuff is probably more applicable during the Phase 4 approval, so talking about the meander and stuff, I don't know if that's applicable right now. So I kind of just recommend to withhold that.
All right. Can we open this discussion? I know that's the question I had with you, is how far can we go with, you know, we just don't want some of these to be lost, and that kind of goes through several phases, so then where do we, you know, make some of these larger site plan?
You could recommend that they amend the overall master plan to include that meander. Doesn't mean they're building it right now, so it would be addressed as they come in for that phase, but they could show it, at least on the plan, on the overall master development plan.
I will accept, yeah, as Carrie suggested.
Okay, great. Great, so we've got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Do I, do we need to specifically state what we're approving? Sorry. So we're, the motion was to approve both the comp plan amendment and the Phase 1 and Phase 2, or the Phase, okay.
With the staff recommendations, engineering recommendations, sidewalk around, and recommendation on the master plan for the meander.
So we're good? Okay, good. Okay, good.
Carrie, you want us to look at it?
Yeah. For you. You probably need to go back. Aaron?
Our next item is a sketch plan review for a project located at 7711 Computer Avenue. So the site is located just south of the Fred Richards Golf Course. It's south of the Pentagon Park Project, right on the border of Bloomington. You can see the shaded area, that's Bloomington, on Viking Drive. It's an existing one-story building there. The site is currently zoned planned industrial district. Notice to the north, the Pentagon Park area, that's been rezoned to mixed development district, where we allow office-retail housing. The site is zoned planned industrial district, located right next to, I always draw a blank on the name of the, of the big industrial building there to the east. So what the applicant is proposing is to remodel that existing building and do some, do an addition to it. The proposal in the foreground here would be for a coffee shop that was intended primarily to serve the uses within the building. The larger structure, which would be an addition, would be for mini-storage. So look at the site plan, so you can see the storage addition and the coffee shop, and the uses within that existing space would be rental space for people that didn't have their own office. They can come in and use some of the space there as well. And also, what's labeled as a maker suite could be for someone who wants to do some type of, where they're testing a product or making something, so a little bit kind of in the manufacturing-type realm, and the applicant can explain a little more on the detail of what they're thinking there. Several issues with this site as proposed. So again, this is zoned planned industrial district. We have a maximum FAR of .5. In the industrial district, we haven't been doing planning for expanding square footage within the industrial district, which we are contemplating in the Southdale District, as we just talked about with that last project. So the site, as proposed, or as it exists today, would only be allowed, the site, 43,000 square foot of usable square footage within the building. What's proposed here is 92,000 square feet, so it's doubling the density that's allowed on the site. Also, in terms of parking, when you put all the uses together, 88 parking stalls are required. The site plan is demonstrating about 53. Other issue that I've run by the applicant, and they're going to make some addition, or amendments to the plan and present to you this evening, but as noted in that table, we don't allow exterior signage for a retail kind of a use. So as you could see, the coffee shop had a big sign there. Also, we don't allow an entrance into a retail space from the outside. Any retail use that's allowed in the industrial district is intended to serve the use on the site. So if you have a cafeteria or something like that, it's intended to serve that office or that manufacturing or warehouse, or whatever the space may be. So as you can see, they've, as originally proposed, they had an entrance here with the signage, and the plans they'll show, they've eliminated that front door and taken off the signage. However, it's still clearly very visible to the site, what the intent is, to not have those retail kind of uses in the industrial district. So a couple of ways to go about this, if they choose to proceed, it could be a variance, be a rather large variance. We could consider amending the ordinance to increase the FAR in an industrial district. A lot of ramifications, we have to think about what that means to all of our industrial districts. One site I'd mentioned is our, the bus garage and the old public worksite. That has industrial zoning as well. Do we want to turn that into a mini-storage kind of? MiniStorage is a use that we're getting a lot of interest in in Edina. We've had some move into the Cahill area. We had a site plan review not too long ago. They started out wanting to have a density similar than what's, to what's proposed here this evening. They didn't want to pursue a variance, so they downsized their request to meet code. So we've had some recent existing businesses come into town that have fit into our current ordinances. So with that, those are the concerns of staff. I can stop there and answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Hamilton?
We have a letter attached that goes into fairly great detail, and it seems, especially at sketch plan review, from an adjacent property owner, with several, several issues there. Is there something driving that list of questions?
Well, it...
That planning understands? I understand the questions as they're listed, but I don't understand why they would surface, what's the issue with the adjacent property owner, that this isn't, this is an issue for them?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what's driving it, other than, you know, they have some concerns with the project, and it is directly adjacent to their, their large site. What's driving it, I don't know.
I don't, I don't see the aux that's getting gored.
Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Nemiroff?
This may relate to Commissioner Hamilton's questions, but I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit, kind of more policy on these issues. For example, in an industrial district, what is the purpose of the policy behind, you know, having really only interior-facing retail and no exterior retail signage? Are you seeing any, are there any trends locally, nationally, with regard to industrial districts in cities like ours?
Generally, industrial property is valued a little lower than your retail commercial. If we were to allow retail in our industrial parks, they'd probably, we'd start to see more and more commercial development within them. That's part of it. In terms of the, that floor area ratio, is that what you're...
No, just more of the signage and the interior-only facing retails.
Yeah, it's really just to, the uses allowed there are more office-industrial, it's not generating a lot of traffic, not generating drive-by, oh, there's a coffee shop, I'm going to drive in there. It's intended for those less intense uses, office, manufacturing, warehouse.
Is it a bad thing to have a more intense use in that district? I mean, is, what would the, what's the negative if it's a higher-value use?
I guess the downsize, if you were to allow those types of uses, your, those types of uses within the city may start to disappear, and it all turns retail.
Yeah, years ago, I was involved with buying a business in a different city, in Silicon Valley, and they had a crummy office, and they were paying through the nose with a horrible landlord, and it turned out it was Apple's first manufacturing facility in Cupertino, but there was no manufacturing going on there anymore. But it was a crummy piece of property. The landlord was probably, this was 15 years ago, was probably making about 36 bucks a month square, 36 bucks a year square foot. I don't know, maybe that's a good thing, right? I mean...
They need a place to start.
Finally, in, in the last year, we passed a brew pub ordinance, and aren't they supposed to be located in these districts? We probably aren't seeing much uptake. What are you, what are we seeing in Edina, we probably aren't seeing much uptake, but what's being seen in other cities that have similar ordinances located in similar districts? What kind of signage? What kind of traffic are they generating? You know, is that causing a change in the perception of the industrial district?
Yeah, at least in my experience in other cities, most cities have similar requirements in their industrial park, where they're not opening it up for retail kind of uses. We haven't had a lot of interest in, or at least that I've heard from, from taprooms, but this would be a site where one would be allowed.
Anybody else have questions?
You know, I see, you see retail, you could see, you know, commercial, you could see industrial in this exact location. So I guess, to me, just, you know, what ends up dictating on a site, just out of curiosity? Is it just the square footage of one of the components, or overall, and I understand since it's in a PID, that's why... And I, and I understand since it's in a PID, that's why it's being held to those zoning standards, but it's just because it's in a PID or-
Exactly.
So for options, we could do a zoning amendment or-
Well, that would be-
What are you, I guess, what are options here? Is there a possibility of reconsidering even what this?
Yeah, so if we were to consider, so if we were to rezone this, you know, it might be considered spot zoning unless it were somehow tied to the development across the street. But to, you know, it'd be one thing if we were considering retail along the whole block or some type of a mixed use, but it would be difficult to just rezone one site.
I was just curious, cause it's such a seemingly mixed, interesting and nice mixed use all in one.
Yeah.
So like, what is it really?
Yeah, an argument, a better argument may be if they were to have both sites under control. Then you've got the three corners here, maybe it's similar to the MDD six and you could do a mixed use there. You know, it's rather heavy industrial to the east.
I guess just my comment is, I'm just asking because I like the fact that it has all these different things and the fact that it's a storage that's mixing creative space with collaboration space. It's like, it's a very forward-thinking concept that I appreciate and I don't want to shun that type of thing from an area where it seems like it's applicable or can fit. So, thank you.
Food trucks, I think we passed an ordinance on food trucks in the last year or two. Would they be permitted in this area?
Food trucks are only allowed if they're in association with a tap room and there's not a restaurant within, I think it's 500 feet.
So like, I've been in other, like, I've been in other cities where a food truck can just drive into an industrial district, park in the afternoon. That's not allowed here?
That's not allowed.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments on the sketch plan? Questions, I mean for Carrie. It was a light, it was a late night for me last night. As was all of us probably. All right. Any more questions for Carrie? Okay. Would the applicant like to come up?
Why don't you guys introduce yourself and then I'll-
Yeah, I'm Ben Krasnick with Temple Properties. Also was up late last night.
Josh Krasnick, Temple Properties, President, 4611 Arden Avenue, Edina.
Dean Avolos and DJ Architecture, 5009 Ridge Road, Edina, Minnesota. So this project, and I'm going to jump to this plan and it sort of goes back to the question, what's starting to happen in this area? And it goes back to your question about these industrial areas. The city is starting, in the county, is starting to create a major bike trail, which is under construction today. Transportation turns of bus routes and a trail system that I know you've been trying to yank through that 7700 projects or wrestling with that whole deal through there. But what this is starting to do is start to change the nature of this district because now you have bus transportation, it's always historical there. You're starting the nuance of a trail system, which is really evolution of the Southdale Plan. I know you've been trying to wrestle get this up to par. And a major bike trail, that's a significant investment. That is starting to set the table of an evolution in this industrial district. And why is it occurring here? Because the buildings are sort of suited for this type of mixed use because they're all industrial buildings. They don't quite work as current industrial buildings because they're too small, too old, but in transition uses of breweries and retail and makerspaces and all that kind of stuff. This is starting to have those ingredients because you're starting to see the transportation uses and the bike uses and that. They're starting to change the demographics of what this area used to be. Before it was industrial park, semi trucks and so forth. Now with the trail system and taking off to whatever he does, because that, you know, that's sort of still a mystery, but it's an evolution of change. That's a sort of brought this up in the play in a, in occurrence of, of this. And the basic idea of this building is that you really have an element that works for a bunch of uses. And this building architecturally works very well, I'll get to my plan here, very well for this type of use, because this is basically the interior plant that allows this type of maker space or curve. You know, right across the street, we have the Reserve. That sits right here, which is, and the Reserve is a deal started, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but it's a business incubation center. You can't reside there permanently, but it has all the services and the main floor of the condominium building. And a lot of people go there to use the office and components and stuff. It basically has all the support service. What's grown out of the Reserve is some of the tenants or members here, because it's really more like a membership, are requesting, do we have something permanent that we can office out of and start inventing out of? And this is where the symbiotic relations started to occur because the Reserve was very supportive of this because it started to build the repertoire. Yeah, you can use our services. Now you have a place to create, a place to office, a place to incubate and grow forth. And the fact it's on the bike trail, which is attracting new millennial type of clientele, this kind of coupling is what started to evolve out of this process and sort of created an interesting background. And the beauty of the existing building is it's set up perfect for it is that it has a atrium-lit lobby that works very well for what I call the common services and a series of small offices that individual businesses can lease in the, in the arrangement. The maker center, which we'd like to have coffee, and I know about the ordinance and the question, I mean, if in my dream, you, you'd like to have an open plate, create the synergy. We can do it interior, but if we had the ability to do it externally, it'd be better. But I understand the zoning overlay in terms of the activity, the conference, you have the maker suites. And if you guys ever watch Shark Tank, a lot of these businesses have that little production piece that comes with it. The idea is I can have an office in my professional services, have the support here, make my element, whatever it is, and then have the storage component as part of it. Because this is flexible, whether it's maker space or storage, it has that kind of ability to flip back and forth. And the other reason for the business storage or mini storage, it sort of helps support the economics of this too. So it has a good cross-reference to it. So the sort of beauty, because the architecture setup well to allow this business incubation, that's a rapidly growing trend in American business and you see it through Coco Location, Downtown and stuff. And because the Reserve got started with their services, this is an offshoot that has sort of occurred to come with it to all that kind of use. And because it's on the bike ra, the bike way, which is going to be sort of its home bike freeway, like they agree on Minneapolis, it now has an appeal for sort of this entrepreneurial setup that's occurring. And the building itself, you know, architecturally, this front part would be renovated. This back part you see here is the new construction. It's storage and maker space and accommodation, so it has the ability to flip back and forth in terms of the operation. This I described why it's occurring because this area is starting to become an area transition because of what's occurring. And this is sort of the secret that's starting to make that impact a bigger and bigger deal. If you look at the Greenway in Minneapolis has done for that swath that exists along Lake Street, which has caused romantic change. The bike way that's being established here is starting to set the beginning of foundation that occurs. So you can sort of see the basic zoning. Carrie went through this with the small business storage and then the incubation spaces start of it. And then the parking that can be additional to allow that proof of parking in front lawn on it. And that's just the existing building right here. And that shows the religion falls within the parcel and the basic plan would be set up. So that's the basic project. It's unique to the area. It's a mix of uses, but it's really an offshoot of what's starting to happen due to the Southdale Plan, which has started to create the trail system. The three rivers bike way, which has really become a major component and the other components, and even taking off because it's starting to change area and evolve into more of a mixed use as opposed to exclusively industrial. And these types of buildings allow these uses of function and succeeding because it's got the right components of warehouse, production space, office in the mix, a fit and accommodation. Then the Reserve next door is what's occurring. So that's what this is coming forward because they've sort of seen the demand in the marketplace. They have the opportunity to build it. And that's how I bring it forward. So it doesn't fit neatly into a zoning group. You know, you can't like, it's like housing or it's industrial, it's a mix of stuff. But in business, this is sort of the trends that are starting to occur of all these associated uses that provide the support to make burgeoning business successful. And that's why this is such a hybrid because this is the nature of the new spinoff entrepreneur creation that is occurring in business. So that's the basic layout of the project. So we stand for questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, forgive me. If you guys have anything, my apologies.
Oh, yeah, so we're not done. Okay.
Sorry, my fault.
I just want to speak real briefly about the business incubator center that's actually going to be planned for going there. And the reason I thought it was interesting, I haven't read Scott Takenoff's letter yet, but the reason I thought it was interesting is this business is actually modeled after the Pitch. A good friend of mine owns a company called The Pitch. It's a business incubator center. And it's actually in Scott Takenoff's building in northeast Minneapolis. So I was surprised that he would, you know, at such an early stage of this, be so forcefully against this. But the business itself, I think, I'd just like to share a couple of things about. So this business would have membership fees that people would come and they pay a fee to come and join the business center. And the fee would range depending if you have your own private space or a shared space. In addition to that, the thing that really kind of makes it interesting is these small businesses don't have any credit and they don't really have a long-term future as to how much space they need. So this, this type of thing gives them a lot of flexibility in what they're doing. In addition to that, it's also a really low-cost option for them because they don't have to lock into a five-year lease. They don't have to spend a bunch of money on tenant improvements. They don't have to put a bunch of office furniture in. This is already there for them. Also, they're going to have a lot of like-minded people doing startup businesses with them and they can start talking about where they're getting their capital from, stuff like that. So that's kind of how the, the initial plan came together. And as I talked to my friend Jeff Hank, who runs The Pitch in Scott Takenoff's building, I said, how else are you gaining revenue? And he said, well, one of our other big ways that we get revenue is we have sponsorship. And that sponsorship comes from law firms that want to get these incubators businesses, business. So as that business grows, they can now have their hooks into a business that's growing and ultimately get more business from them themselves. There's sponsorship from accounting firms, banks, and, and, you know, plus if there's a specific category where if we start having a bunch of people that are making, I don't make up something, but mouth cards, okay? And they're, they're making a lot of different sporting equipment. Now you start having sporting-related companies that are going to start sponsoring this to get their business as well. And finally, the other way that we make money on just the incubator side is we have, we host events. People can rent out the space and they can have events that take place there that, you know, help further pitch their business. All that sounds great, okay? But the problem is it's not super-financialable. And because you have a bunch of little tiny companies that don't have any credit, that don't have long-term leases, and it makes it really difficult to actually support. Yeah. So if you look at the storage, we kind of say, okay, well, how can we be a little bit more creative on this thing? And so we said, well, what if we added some sort of storage component? The storage component would not only serve the small incubator businesses as their business grew and they needed more space, but also would serve as a, a financial backstop to this, front of this business center. And that gave us a little bit more stability. It also gave us financeability for the project. So that's just a little bit of a history on how we came up with what we did.
Now you're done? Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so where were we? Commissioner Bennett, thanks.
Just full of questions tonight. So one, what's the name?
Still in the process. We're, we're, we're trying to figure out. So I'm meeting with Jeff Hank again tomorrow morning to see if The Pitch will actually be part of this center or not.
Okay. So I guess a couple of things and you, you actually answered most of them with the business part. As for this, the business storage, at least for the, you know, the respective, you know, the occupants, how are you going to make sure that these are businesses that are renting out space versus people? That's one question. And then two, when you're, like you're talking about shared space and all this, are, are there places in here that part of the small business storage could be collaboration space? I mean, are there places for visitors to come besides just maybe that business maker center and the-
Sure. Yeah, we, we envision the lobby, I guess it's labeled lobby for display, is this being kind of the coworking-
Okay.
-space with the, the campsites and the, you know, people huddling up and working together kind of space. And then I guess with the maker suites, we envision that, you know, these could even have back doors going into the, into the storage area. I think we, we will probably accept some residential, you know, types of customers as well in terms of residents from the community. And as you see, like around Southdale, you're getting a lot of new apartments. And those people are moving from five-bedroom homes to a two-bedroom apartment or condo. They're going to need some space for some of their stuff they're not quite ready to get rid of, so.
Right. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm a big fan of the, again, the forward-thinking of this, so commend you on the ideas.
Commissioner Nemiroff, did you still have a question? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Hobbs?
I guess, yeah, again, I kind of like the idea you guys have into a business plan. And I can see how this area is evolving. I guess from my perspective, it's just, a variance is a difficult way to accomplish, seems awkward way to accomplish this. I think we should perhaps will be looking at the, the ordinance itself and trying to figure out a way to accommodate something like this. But certainly I like what you guys are doing. And again, I can see how this area, we're going to need to do something in terms of transition.
Commissioner Nemiroff?
Thank you. And yeah, interesting presentation. So to take it back to some real basic level, so the variance that you're seeking includes a couple of, I'm getting, you know, getting back to just the nitty-gritty there. There's a couple of, a few variances that you're seeking, one of which is on the parking. You're asking, you're saying, you're planning to have 50% of the parking that would be recommended by the current ordinance, whether that actually be changed or not, I mean, put aside. Why do you believe that, I apologize if you've covered, this has been covered, but why do you believe such a lower amount of parking is needed?
Yeah, I guess I would answer that with the storage component takes probably five or six stalls. And so we're going to have about 50 stalls for the coworking space and based on, you know, just counting up people through there. Not everyone's going to be there at the same time generally. And we, we think we're roughly four per thousand on the office components and we think that's, that should be adequate.
And then the other reason, and you know, is, you know, because exactly the storage, that's where we sort of came with this, so the close. And the other reason is what we're hoping is that this guy right here, and we providing bike space within the building and our bike storage repairs, that we see this, now granted it may not be initially a lot, but because of transportation network in here, I think there'll be more transportation modes in this site, especially when this gets set up, because this is such a regional trail. And the fact of the bridge over 100 and the connection, you may not see it immediately, but if you see what the Greenway has done in Minneapolis in terms of bike trips per casting and evolving, this has its same background and it has same potential. It's early, but when the Greenway put in, it was very early, but you know, within five years, that really evolved into a district. This area, and then whenever Scott catches up, whatever occurs there, it's going to start creating this evolution. And so we see, you know, we think the number of 50 cars is adequate based on the incidence of storage and use of code is a higher, so that's why we're in that. If you're sitting back, but for the business, it's a fit that works sort of what's going in here. And the fact of the transportation, that's how we, or lighter in the parking numbers and heavier because to be truthful, the number I think's heavy for what's going in here.
And, and also the second thing, and this is my last question on the, I believe, is an exterior signage. Why do you believe you need two exterior signs? And I apologize again if you've kind of covered that before.
Oh, for the coffee use?
I'm sorry?
You mean exterior signage?
Exterior signs. Why do you believe you need two exterior signs? Exterior signs. Why do you believe you need two exterior signs?
Well, I guess if we were going to do the coffee shop, the idea with the coffee shop is really
It gets its own identity.
It gets its own identity that way, but the coworking people really like to have a coffee shop. You know, it's kind of the feel that they like to have. So unfortunately, to make it sustainable with 40 people that are 50 people that are going to be occupying the, the building, that's not enough people for a coffee shop.
So one is storage, one is coffee. One sign, one sign is for storage. Carrie, if this property were located in a district that allowed these kinds of uses, how many exterior signs would be permitted under our ordinance, under, you know, if it were located there?
One per frontage.
One per frontage. And will this one have, will both signs, will both signs be on the same frontage essentially? They'll both be kind of facing what, north, north? They'll be both facing north? Is that west?
So the coffee shop signage wouldn't be allowed under our current code just because we don't allow retail signage in an industrial district or that door, that entrance that you see on the screen.
Right. But if it were in a non industrial district, probably wouldn't have the storage then. Is that the idea?
Correct.
So you'd have a, you've got a coffee, in a, in a non industrial, you have a coffee sign. In an industrial district, you wouldn't even be allowed the storage sign, it sounds like.
Well, if it were multiple use, take for example, the Burgundy right up the street that was referenced. Each business has a wall sign. I might add that that's a site that's, now granted, there's more retail on that site, but that site conforms to our ordinance for parking and they're short parked there all the time. So that's a concern staff has with kind of a similar use going on here. And now they're short parked. So we would, staff has some concerns. You know, and the setbacks aren't met. It just kind of feels like it's too much on the site.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you applicants.
Go for it.
I'm going to make a blanket statement about my, my preferences. I am not a fan of mini storage. I think it's great as an investor because you take a property, you can cash flow it real well, you can leverage it up however you choose. Works really well in terms of spawning and development inside the city. I don't think mini storage does that for you. So I have a high degree of skepticism about anything involving mini storage. And I think trying to tweak ordinances and whatnot or change ordinances and then deal with the unintended consequences of that to accommodate mini storage is probably not a direction I'd be very supportive of, so. Like the concept about the Maker Lab, but mini storage is.
Can I make a comment to that? Yeah, so I was curious about how these maker suites would work. And so I found a YouTube sensation that was a woodworker. And so I went and sat down with him over coffee, of course. And we talked about, you know, what would you want? You know, what kind of space would you need? And, you know, he can describe what he would need. And he's like, surprisingly, you don't need a ton of space. So I said, what are you doing all this right now? He said, I'm doing it in my garage, which is where most people are doing this. So, well, what do you think about having it next to storage? He said, that'd be great. Like if I'm really trying to be a legitimate business here, you know, I need to have some storage for cabinets and whatever the kind of stuff that he's making. So there, I think there was kind of a tie that we're trying to do between the two. And I guess, you know, per code, the, the storage is permitted use. So we could build a smaller facility. But rather than build the smaller facility, we wanted to do something to kind of address, you know, concerns of, well, you don't create any jobs, you know. And so here we have 40, 50 people working in a facility where if it was just storage, it'd be probably, yeah, one person. So we're trying to do a little bit of both on the same site.
And the other thing, we didn't want to throw away the building because it works so well for this, you know, so you'd say, well, tear down the building, we just fit it and fresh build it. But this building had the right layout for maker space because it had the lobby for display and the offices. I mean, this is fits, they said, why waste the building? Let this or this, let this sort of this. And it really fit well to create that, create a symbiotic view. So that's a little bit why it came out the way it did. Like you say, could we have wiped out the building and create new, but it would be a loss of this layout, which is a perfect fit for this kind of co-location creative use. And it's, you know, you're preserving the resource of the building. It fit right and made sense. And that's sort of why we sort of pull it together the way you see it. And the uses do support each other. That's the nature of these businesses. And where you see it the most is, you know, you look at all those businesses in Shark Tank. They're on the same, they have a small manufacturing, they have a storage component. They're looking for money. They need support to get through their initial growth curve. And these are sort of the components that make it work, so.
And then I should point out, we also talked to the reserve about being potentially our operator for this as well. And, you know, they said they've got some immediate people that need this kind of space that, you know, they might be distributing, you know, online businesses, of course, are a big thing right now. And you can't go into the reserve and bring a whole bunch of your product with you. Like it's supposed to be more professional, bring your laptop, have a coffee kind of thing. So this is kind of taking it a step further for some of those businesses that are more, you know, distributing some products that they need to move in and out, but they don't want to lease a five or 10,000 square foot warehouse, which actually these days is pretty hard to find even.
Hamilton, do you have a comment?
I hate to do this, but I'm gonna. The, the piece that you've put before us, I think the ideas seem to make an enormous amount of sense. The drawings are wonderful. It's at a sketch plan level. It's, you have gone above and beyond what we see that 90% of the folks bring to us for a sketch plan. An idea that you know, I know, and everybody else knows is, gosh, I hope this works. You're, you're kind of out there. There's a couple of pieces that your own story begins to run into some conflicts. A woodworker does not bike to work carrying his lumber. You need a truck. There are, there are pieces and there is no overflow. If you put this on another site someplace and you didn't have enough parking, people would say, okay, I'll park over there. Here, there is no over there. It's either here or I gotta go home. You, you put, I like the building, I like the concept, I like the ideas. It makes an enormous amount of sense, but it really puts us on the spot. For saying, and we've already got some folks that are showing up. How they even know you exist, I don't know. And ruffled feathers already.
We, we compete with them all over town, so it's not surprising.
Okay.
We weren't surprised to see the letter.
There's a piece to me that says, you know, go for it. It, it sounds absolutely spectacular. The whole idea of 50 new entrepreneurs going out there, doing something that something's got to work. There's enough of them. The other piece that you've done is you've actually designed a warehouse building instead of a pole barn. Wow. Terrific. Saying this needs an image, this needs an idea, this needs a place, this needs reality that, that, that makes it real. But gracious, it puts us in a tight spot.
The property taxes will get paid. And I was just saying, we'll be sure to pay the property taxes.
Commissioner Bennett?
One more thing to add, kind of understanding the pieces a little more and understand the challenge you're up against just with this concept. And I, I mean, I love this concept and this is, you know, where a lot of, you know, my friends and my network, they don't have this kind of thing and they need it. And I would love to have something like this any day. Where does it fit? You know? That, that's what's tough. What zoning does this even occupy? So I see the, I see the advantage of pulling the retail signs off because one, if you're trying to, you know, hinge your business on that, you're going to get so much in and out and it's not drive through coffee. So I think you'd be overflow parking a lot. And then if you fall back on the storage thing and just keep the, the coffee internal, I think, you know, you're in a better spot as for parking. So I see the challenge. I mean, I'm a proponent to this. It involves a lot of changes, but, you know, to me, some change is good. This is good.
Commissioner Hobs?
I agree with what you're saying. I just think this is so much in terms from a variance standpoint, it's just hard for me to kind of rationalize how we do that and the precedent that it's set. So I'm all for trying to figure out how to accommodate something like this. And the mixed use and the co-location of businesses, it's all great ideas, but I think we need to look at this area and think about what the ramifications are to our PIDs and how we have this kind of transition from one use to another. And to do that relatively soon, if we can, to kind of look at, at how we can accommodate something like this.
Carrie?
If I could just chime in, I think that, that's the perfect kind of comprehensive plan discussion where if we're going to talk about doubling the density in our industrial district, we need to know what the ramifications of that are. Where we need to know what impact road transportation study, kind of like what we're doing at the Southdale, in the Southdale area. So it's probably a lengthy kind of study. But I think that would be the, the way to go rather than variance.
Just add something? This is hard being the chair. You never get to say anything. I'm going, I'm going for it. But I totally agree with what Commissioner Hobs has said, is that I think we should look at the big picture and what you also said. But I also agree that I think you've tried to squeeze too much on this site too and uncomfortable with that. So throwing it back.
And maybe your business model's a little different, but wasn't there, or isn't there kind of a colo type business near the Red Savoy Pizza down there? How does your business differ from that?
Yeah, that, that's the reserve and yeah, yeah, we've been talking with them about, you know, bringing some more of these kind of maker kind of businesses over into our complex that aren't a fit. And there's a
And it's not even an office. You get a desk, you can use it for the day and then you vacate it. This gives the production manufacturing part, which the reserve doesn't have, which they're begging for. And that's why how this relationship started to evolve.
I'm going to add another thing. And, and it's just because I just have to say it because, I mean, I believe in this type of project and unfortunately to do it the right way, you know, it's three years down the road to get this in the comp plan. However it could fit, this is gone. You know, I don't want these type of things to leave you dining where, you know, this doesn't fit a traditional PID. So like, yeah, it's all these variances, but to me, it just, it fits there. So it's, it's unfortunate, but I, I just need to say, you know, I'm totally behind this idea.
Great. So this goes to City Council?
This will go to City Council, correct.
Do you know the date or?
Yeah, we're doing this one at their next, meeting next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys, thank, thanks for staying all late. Sorry to take so much time. Yeah, there is, not tonight.
All right, we'll keep things moving. I'm going to fall asleep. All right. So we've got correspondence and petitions. Anything under that? Thank you. Is that where you wanted to, when did you want to talk about the comp plan? Is that under correspondence and petitions? No, that's under
Or staff comments.
Okay.
We can talk about it now, if you'd like.
Sure. Do we have any chair member comment? Nope, let's go for it. Let's do it. So what we're going to do is sort of discussing that comp plan, the assignments. The, what was emailed today, right?
Right. I don't know if you have a copy in front of you. Okay, you do. So you have, that's the list. So the intent is we'd like to pair each of you up with a commission. So that would be kind of your responsibility commissioned through the comprehensive plan where they would bring their issues up through you and to the greater, to the group. I did hear back from Commissioner Lee, who's not here. I asked her if she had a particular preference for a certain commission, and she did express interest in the Transportation Commission. Don't know if there's others that would like that, but since she's not here, I thought I should throw that out.
I always thought if you came to the meeting, you got dibs, but.
Because I know the, you know, Commissioner Thorson, you were involved with the transportation plan. Is that like something you want to continue with? Okay. Okay. Okay.
It would entail, it's kind of a moving target at this point, but it would entail attending some of their meetings where they're talking about their the transportation chapter, for example, whatever their chapter might be. Like the heritage preservation, that's a separate chapter. So it's, it's meeting maybe with their, their chair, attending a few of their meetings when that's on their agenda. Correct. Yep. Yeah, this wouldn't be. It would. So it wouldn't be attending every one of their meetings. It would just be when that particular topic was discussed and you, we would coordinate those dates well in advance to give you plenty of advanced notice.
Perhaps?
I'll be happy to volunteer for energy and environment since that's kind of my gig.
Okay. Okay.
Unless anyone else, I volunteer for the Human Rights and Relations Commission unless someone else would like that.
What do you guys think? Sure. Okay.
I'd be interested in the Arts and Culture.
Great.
I have no idea what the Human Rights Commission does, to tell you the truth. And I think that's the last one that's
I think it's Community Health.
Community Health.
Community Health. I mean, Carrie, I mean, we just had a meeting with them and some of them are actually very interesting. Can you like give like a quick summary? Like what does Community Health look at? Do you remember?
Yeah, I, I don't. I'm sorry.
Right, and smoking.
Yeah, and actually, we will be partnering with them on the, this will be added to our work plan, you know, the temporary structures in the backyard. So that's one of their issues that we'll be actually working with them on. You know, if someone else is interested in transportation, that, that, the magnitude of that one, we could have two two on there as well.
I would join Susan on that.
On transportation? Okay, great. So what if we do, if, what do we do if we have one that you don't have anyone on? So the Health Commission, we don't have anyone for that one, right? Or do you, do you see Energy and Environment having to?
We should probably fill Health first.
Carrie, can you describe what's involved with Health? I mean, in terms of the comp plan, what, how much, how much does, how much? Like transportation's this in the comp plan, for example, is Health this? Is Health this?
Health might be, have a piece in each chapter. You know, it might be, you know, bringing certain policies or things that they're striving for. It might, it may not be solely one chapter. Actually, that could be true for, for all of these. So it's finding what their issue is and where does it fit within the comprehensive plan.
plan. The idea is to try to bring all of these commissions together, so they're, they do have input.
Am I, and so Vice Chair Nemirov and myself, we're supposed to also volunteer then? I was a little confused with that.
You can.
If nobody wants it, I'll take the health.
Okay.
Well, you're on, you're on human rights, right?
I'll do the human rights and relations.
Yeah. I'll take health, that's, why not? Bring back smoking now.
Just spin the wheel.
Drinking, talking drinking, right? Okay.
I think we're good, that's all I have.
Nemirov, for Human Rights and Relations Commission, Strauss for Heritage Preservation Commission, Lee and Hamilton on transportation, Thorson on park board, Hobs and Bennett, can we have both on that? Why not? Good, I think that's going to, they're doing a lot with that one. Both, I'm on Health Commission, and then we got Berube on arts and culture.
And if, if our student members are interested, if there's a particular interest that, you know, they, you don't have to commit tonight, but you could think about it.
Parks.
Yeah, that might be tough.
There's a brew pub commission.
I'll be on that.
So what exactly is our role as liaison? I mean, are we then meeting separately as a commission to integrate this into the comp plan, and what's that process look like?
Yeah, I don't have a clear picture.
Oh, cool.
You know, it might be for some of these, we have joint meetings, you know, I'm seeing with Transportation Commission, you know, a joint work session, you know, if the whole commission wants to talk to the planning commission, it could be a scheduled work session. It could be you attending their meetings, answering questions, maybe their chair or representative would attend one of our meetings and go through some of their issues. So we want to be flexible to try to work with the commissions and get what we, what we can maximize our communication.
So should we reach out to the chairs now, right, and discuss this with them, or what's the schedule? What's, is there like a, something we should give them and say, "Here's what we're doing, here's what we need from you," or should we wait until a consultant's hired, or?
Yeah, so we were starting to get feedback from the other commissions, who's our representative, so that they're, they may reach out to you initially, we'll provide this list to the staff liaisons for each of those commissions, and I would anticipate they will probably reach out to you, unless you'd like to reach out to them in advance.
But now, now's fine. Now, you don't have to wait for something, and there's no real, okay.
Great. I know it's late, but can you do like a quick update on what happened at the council meeting?
The City Council, they did approve the Twin City Orthopedic Project. It was a unanimous vote. They did require them to put in the sidewalk as part of the first phase along the north lot line. You know, that was the one main thing out of the principles of the greater Southdale area.
Did they do anything to the parking ramp to dress that up, or anything with the north-south connection?
They did, they enhanced the entrance features, so based on the feedback from the commission, they revised the plans that went to the council. So they did do some revisions after our review. It wa, they weren't, I wouldn't describe them as significant changes, but just a little, some archway features over the, over the entrances. They did encourage them, when they're ready to go for Phase Two, to try to really dress up that ramp if they can, but no specifics on what they, what they had to do.
Did that subdivision go through on the lot?
With the Twin City Orthopedic?
No.
Variance.
Oh, the vari, oh, yes, that's right. The variance was denied. I believe that was a unanimous vote.
It was.
So they did, did follow the planning commission recommendation on that one.
Great, well, anything else? And move to close? Thank you. All in favor?